I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will. Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Okay, so next is deeper input, three email, three patron emails, they've all been attached. Mr. Booblets, are you going to read that?
Yeah, sure. We have one that requested it was read aloud.
There's only two attached. Was there a third one that came in late?
No, the second attachment that has two emails in.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, dear members of Lakeland School Board, I am writing the voice my serious concerns regarding an in-person reopening of the schools in Raffin during the COVID-19 pandemic. There have been many, many examples nationwide regarding community spread increases after campuses have reopened. I've been very dissatisfied with the response to the Panhandle Health mandate regarding wearing the wearing of face masks. So I'm curious about how you can decide that face coverings are recommended rather than required during in-person classes. You may be setting a precedent to disregard any future health mandates, which I believe is dangerous and irresponsible. I searched the district website for educational information regarding the use of face masks and found only one mention, a link to the CDC directions on how to make a cloth mask. Every resource I have found from medical experts supports the use of masks to slow the virus without the suggested guidelines in place. I do not feel that I will be able to shop safely during the weekdays at the Super 1 store next door to the high school with students coming over before, during, and after school. So I am requesting a response to the following questions. Why don't the Lakeland School, why doesn't the Lakeland School website give more information about the use of face masks in the helping slow the spread of COVID-19? How are you able to ignore the face coverings mandate from Panhandle Health or Cootney County? Are you going to have the city police or county sheriff's officers at the school to give their educational approach to enforcing the Panhandle Health mandate? Will you provide masks for the students who wish to use them but did not have one? If there were to be a community spread of the virus, are you prepared to accept that you could not, that you could have done more to prevent a tragedy or even deaths? Regarding Shana Booblets.
And then I understand that Mr. Quimby is here to do input, okay?
He's first.
Since we, well, we didn't have an action. So just since we haven't done it in person for a while, just a reminder, we've got three minutes. We, it's not a dialogue, you can't discuss. So we get kicked off the. Thank you, yourself, training, so.
Although.
So just remind that we can't discuss.
No names, right?
Right. Okay. Or positions or anything. Nothing, this one I didn't have any, but, okay.
If you don't mind, I'm going to send a quick text to one of our watchers to make sure everything looks okay, but I'm going to make sure they can still hear us.
I'm worried that might happen. I saw some Cootney electric vehicles out, I know three down, my way out.
She says it's all good.
Okay.
There we go. Up there?
Or right, wherever you're coming from.
Just right there, then you go on the video. I'll do it in three minutes.
Very good at this.
No worries.
So last time I spoke at a school board meeting, I was threatened. And with taking my keys and banning me from the high school for speaking up for kids. I was compelled to advocate for students. I couldn't turn my back on them. This is where we are right now in the high school. The school is never wrong. If you speak up, you become the problem. High school kids confided in me to do the right thing and speak up for them, where their cries fell on deaf ears. All I wanted was these kids to have a great high school experience like I had. How can I, how can they have that when the high school wants to crucify them for making a mistake? Everyone makes mistakes. I believe that district policies must be followed, but how can we tell kids to follow the policies to be held accountable? When the administration is in charge to not follow the policies and are not held accountable?
Okay, we're, we're starting to disparage, remember we can't discuss.
I thought you said no positions.
Administration.
No positions?
It is. And, and remember, your comments have to be related to something on our agenda.
It is.
Okay. We're not here just to bash this.
I know, I'm not bashing anybody. I'm just saying, policies are not followed. Okay, so I would like the board to consider let me attend an executive session. So I can let them know what is happening in this high school behind their backs. They will come up here, give a speech about drug testing. And they will say how they've been doing it by policy. But how was lining up 40 kids to be drug tested in the gym where where everyone close to, oh, sorry. How's lining up 40 kids to be drug tested in the gym anywhere close to being confidential? I was calling kids through their friends to go back to the school and have a drug test confidential. In my opinion, the school does not completely follow the district policy and leaves the district liable to legal action or vulnerable to legal action. I do not know, I do not know this is not an excuse. Also, why is one educator punished for breaking district policies and another, nothing has happened to them? I want to work with the system if the system will listen. Thank you for your time and your service to Lakeland School District. I just wanted to say one other thing. If the Board of Education adopts a policy and its agents act contrary to such actions.
I would like.
Is that times?
Yeah, I would like him to finish what he's saying.
If the Board of Education adopts a policy and its agents act contrary to such action will likely be considered per se unreasonable, with the result that that school official may be liable for negligence or even violation of constitutional rights. Aside from statutory requirements, Board of Education are well advised to develop policies and guides to school officials in the daily operation of the district. The Board of Education has a duty to be consistent in dealing with parents and students to otherwise would be subject to the Board to constitutional claims. Because people have the right to equal protection of laws from governmental agencies such as the Boards of Education, a written policy can be invaluable in such situations to guide administrators to inform parents as what the rules are. Thank you for your time.
I missed your name.
David Quimby.
Could you spell your last name for me, please?
Q U I M B Y.
Thank you so much for your input. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quimby. Mr. Hoffman, please, to speak on our drug testing program. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, Board of Trustees, and I'm sure instead, appreciate the opportunity to, to present to you a little bit about just the scope of the drug testing program that we have. When I was a kid, and I grew up on a small farm, and we used to come in at lunchtime after doing our morning chores. And my mom would religiously go to the top of the refrigerator with our Philco radio and turn it to 12:40. And we would, at 12, we would listen to Paul Harvey. And Paul Harvey, we knew for those 15 minutes, we were to eat and not talk. We were to listen to his broadcast. Paul Harvey always had a segment. And in the segment, he would bring up something that we knew a little bit about, but we didn't know everything about it. And he would share a little bit beyond what the normal scope was. And at the end of the story, he would always say, now you know the rest of the story. And I know, you know, in a situation, you know, this is an example, I think, of one of those things where you can hear a lot of things, you know, in the community about what's going on with our drug testing policy. But I really appreciate Mr. Hoffman. He's put a lot of time and effort into this. And he's going to be doing the presentation for you about our drug testing policy. And really, my hope to kind of give you the rest of the story here a little bit. So, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you. Good evening. For those that don't know, Jimmy Hoffman, I'm the Assistant Principal of Lakeland High School. I'm extremely honored to have that position. I'm the product of this school district back in 2003. And it's been fantastic to come back and serve the school district that I once graduated from. I'll start you guys off with our mission. This really does drive us every single day. And, and I don't have a memorant, because just the few things that I, that speak from the heart is we just want to empower our kids. And we want to do everything in our power to make sure that our kids reach their full potential. Okay, so they can be successful later on in life. Let me just start off with our drug testing. Why? Why didn't we ever start this in the first place? Why didn't we ever get to that point of thinking that we needed to even start this? Mr. Derek and I took, when he was the principal, and I became the assistant principal five years ago. You know, we, we presented some information three years ago that we could not just sit on our hands. I brought Mr. Conroy, Joe Conroy, with me with Cootney County probation. Joe's actually been in our school district and working with our school district for the last 18 years. He's seen our school district for a long time, works with all of our kids that are on probation for our school district. And he sat down with me three years ago, and please feel free to fill us in on the conversation about what kind of problems were at Lakeland High School.
Well, like, you know, as you said, I've been here for 18 years and I stayed, you know, a lot of drugs coming in and out and kids using. And I just had a situation where I had a young man on probation and knew another person on probation, or that wasn't on probation, but associated with this young man. But I'd heard he was using methamphetamine, and I knew he was an athlete at the school. So I contacted Jimmy, just because, I mean, it's not the first time that I've heard, you know, kids using, you know, using Molly and ecstasy and marijuana and alcohol and, you know, whatever. But meth is like up there for me. And so that's when I alerted Mr. Hoffman about, you know, that he had an athlete that was using meth over the summer. And then I believe when he spoke to him, he tested and he admitted to it. And he tested positive with this, the conversation he had with that person.
So, correct, we have, we had a problem on our hands. You know, I was given this information and, you know, we couldn't just sit on our hands and just not do anything about it. We brainstormed, what can we do? If we didn't do anything, we wouldn't be living up to our mission statement, because we wouldn't be doing everything in our power and make sure our kids are reaching their full potential. Our culture at Lakeland High School, five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, wasn't the strongest it probably could be. For a lot of different reasons, but I know drugs and alcohol, tobacco, and this substance in our school was not helping. And then our current policy at the time wasn't truly allowing us to get our hooks into kids and truly help kids once we have identified that they need help. Are you worried about that, Quincy?
Well, yeah, it might help if you point at the other TV too. You'll have a stronger signal.
Excuse me. There we go. Let's start off with what the old policy used to say. You know, we didn't do very much drug testing. It was very sporadic. You know, there'd be a handful of drug tests throughout the year. If a student was in violation with our old policy, they'd be gone in a minimum of 25 days to 45 days. But here's the kicker. We would just send them off away from their team, they're kicked off the team, they have nothing to do with their team. We have, we don't see them with our sports programs for 45 days, and if they take a class, then they can reduce it down to 25 days. But we really don't have anything to do with them, not as much as we do now. And so the second offense, they're completely done. So they get caught with a substance abuse with alcohol, tobacco. The second offense, they're absolutely just kicked off for a calendar year. They can't participate in any extracurricular activities. Our current policy. So our current policy, we decided that we would, we would live like that 10-day, you know, on the first offense, a kid tests positive for any of our extracurricular activities, or maybe they get a citation from the police department. 10 days, and here's what I really love about the 10 days. We feel like our extracurricular programs are extremely strong. That's what we want them. That's, we feel like that's what makes them better. So for those 10 days, we want them to practice. We want them with our coaches. We want them with their teammates. We feel like that's a better place for them than, for them than to just kick them and say, we'll see you in 45 days. We put them in a substance abuse education awareness force. Depending on the substance, that could be a tobacco cessation class, all the way to putting them into Rethink Council for some sort of drug therapy. On the second offense, the student, well, the student athlete will be removed from the extracurricular activity for that season, but they still have an opportunity to recover. Let's just say in the fall season, they hit their second offense, we still want them getting better to participate in the winter season. If they're in the winter season and get their second offense, we still want them to get therapy and get help. And we're going to help them get there, and we still want them to participate in the spring season. It's only until they hit the third offense that we'll be removing them from the, from the full calendar year. So I feel like this is a much more forgiving policy than what we had, but yet we're able to get kids truly the help that they, they need to get. You know, this whole drug testing policy has allowed us to really identify the kids that need help and we're able to now work with a lot of different people to get them the help they need. One of the best decisions we made three years ago, I will say, this has been a journey. I mean, we, we, we put this in, we thought we knew all the answers. I'm not going to stand up here and say we've been perfect by any means. And we've been human and we've learned a ton. I'll, I'll say that to be, to say the least. The best decision we made was we partnered up with Absolute Drug Testing. Absolute Drug Testing does all of Cootney County juvenile probation, the drug testing, adult probation, drug testing, and missing if I'm forgetting anything. And so we reached out to them and they came to our school and they said, this is exactly what we want to do is we want to help kids. And so they came on and it's been a great, fantastic partnership with Absolute Drug Testing. They actually come onto our campus. They actually choose all of our kids at random. We have nothing to do with that. The only thing we have to do with is every kid that's eligible for extracurricular activities, we send them all the rosters to Absolute. And they just ask how many kids do you want to test? We tell them, they send us the random list. And we pull those kids out of class. They come in and they administer all the drug tests on campus. That's nice that we really don't have anything to do with that. And then, and then they also, once we do get a positive test at the school, they go back to their labs and they actually give us a very in-depth results page that will give us a better picture of how serious this is and what kind of substance and how much is in their system. And so forth. If you guys ever want an example, I provided one there.
Well, I think something, if I could just add something to that right there, just to clarify again, the purpose of the testing is, is really to assist the student to become clean of the substance. So for example, if a student tests positive for THC and, you know, in their system, they have an amount of, I don't know, 80 nanograms. I don't even know, 80 nanograms of their, in their system. So we, we, at that point, that's the first offense, they're 10 days, and we're going to test them now for two, every two weeks, you know, after that. And if they test positive, again, which they probably will, because it takes certain kids a number of days to get that THC out of their system. And so the second time we test them, we just say, we don't expect it to be zero, because we know it's probably not going to be zero. But if it's less than it is now, we know that you haven't been using it yet, which is good. So, so again, if they could have another positive test, we don't count that as step two or strike two. We just say, hey, this is good. You're definitely showing that you haven't been using. You're still, you know, if the 10 days are over there, they can go back on the team and play. Because we know they're not using anymore. And that's the key. That's what we want. We want these kids to be free, because we just have a fundamental belief that kids can perform academically, athletically better if they're, if they're free of substances in their, in their system.
Thank you. I'm trying to be quick so you guys can ask as many questions as possible. In the 2018, 19 school year, when we first started this, we tested roughly 350 students. And these are the results we got. We had some THC, we had some opioids, we had some amphetamines, nicotine, obviously. Our school culture, that's where it was, where we, where we served, when we survey all of our students. Our, our school culture wasn't as strong as I would have liked it, or our administration team isn't as strong as we would have liked it. This is a part of that. In the 2019 school year, we tested 157. We stopped in March, obviously, due to COVID. We had some nicotine and some THC, it was all. In one year's time, we were able to bump some of our school culture things up, you know, if they like school. And if they feel like their school has high standards for achievement. I mean, you know, we're able to, in that, in that year's time, start shifting some of those cultures in the right direction. As of today, when we started this school year, we've only done 50 tests so far, and we have, we're at zero, zero positives. So I'm extremely optimistic of how this trend is heading. It, it shows a great deal when you walk down our hallways at Lakeland High School, you can feel just a, a great sense of pride. I've talked to many students, some students that were, you know, that, that liked our drug testing, some students that maybe got caught up into it and had a negative. I've now been able to call those kids back in and get their perspective and it's been great conversation with them. And, and also was able to talk to some parents tonight. I have Grant and Eliza C. Grant and Eliza, they have an older son that graduated in 2017 and currently a son that's a senior at Lakeland High School. So they've been able to see our culture for the last eight years. And I would just like Eliza maybe to just speak on her behalf of her perspective of
Yeah, I just have some scroll notes, just so I don't get nervous. So I mean, I'm not here to advocate, you know, one, like, it's common sense, it's drug testing is good for the school district, it's good for our community. But I think, like Mr. Hoffman just shared, it's, it's really about the accountability and building character, character of our students and character of our school. But one thing that has really stood out for me, you know, outside of all the obvious positive things, is having a son, a student athlete that graduated in 2017 and a current student athlete, is the congruency that's been placed upon all team sports. Everyone's had it held accountable the same. Doesn't matter if you play basketball, doesn't matter if you're on a soccer team, doesn't matter if you're on track. Everyone has the same roles and everyone's held to the same policies and accountability. So I think that's really important. And I want to share too, I've been out in the community, talked to other parents, and, and they really wish that their school actually implemented their drug policy, rather than just having a drug policy. And I think that makes us stand out, you know, as a school and taking that leadership and taking that responsibility, even though it might not be the most popular one, you know, I've heard some parents say, we lose half of our athletes. And that's, that's, it's impacting, because this is something that needs to be fixed now before they go out into the adult world. And it's something that you're tested if you're going in the military, you're tested if you're running construction, if you're driving a truck, if you're working at a bank, if you're doing anything, you're going to get drug tested, and it's random. So the accountability now and fixing it now early, I think is really important. And obviously, the changes to policy, I think, is, is a positive attribute as well. So, that's my feelings. Thank you.
You know, like I said, I'm not going to stand up here and say we've been perfect with this. And if we would have waited to come up with all these perfect solutions to how we're going to implement this program, I don't think we ever would have started. There's just so many layers to this. And so we're always looking for ways to improve this process, and I feel like we're in a pretty good spot right now. And we're really starting to see this payoff. When we started this drug testing, those kids were sophomores, and, and so now those kids are seniors. And just talking to the class president the other day, just an honest individual, you know, she says, our class was never even, was never even able to get started on drugs, I mean, because the expectation was there. If you want to do this, you have to be clean. And so that really helped hear from, from those students. And, you know, we're not here to identify kids, to punish them, to get them in trouble, but we are here to identify kids, to get them help if needed. And for them to reach their full potential. And I'm not going to stand up here and say that anything about this has been easy. There hasn't, this, this, this isn't an easy process, but what I am trying to tell you is that it's been worth it. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time. I would be glad to answer any questions. We have a lot of resources.
Can I just take it back on just one thing? Is that like my case load right now, when I started with Cootney County, it was over 60. I think I'm at 25 right now. And I just tell Jimmy that I think I got seven or eight kids, which is the biggest case load I've had at Lakeland High School in years. And I think I only have one who's in at Raffin Counseling. Before Raffin Counseling, I would have probably seven or eight kids in there. And in the last few years, I mean, I'm not seeing it, because I think you're doing my job. I went to UAM, which is nice, but I still UA. But we have those kids that still kind of aren't athletes that we got to test. But, you know, I only have, like I said, one kid at Raffin Counseling, and I feel bad because I gave him a lot of business, but it's, it's a good bad. So, but I appreciate it.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
Questions?
On the randomization, do we keep track of the randomization in the sense, meaning, do we know if we're actually covering the entire base of the kids in the extracurricular programs? Or in the randomization, are certain kids being tested unnecessarily multiple times?
So that's a great question. And yes, it's 100% random. So could a, could a kid, and has this happened, yes, could a kid be selected three times in a row? Yeah, that's happened. And I just don't feel good about it by me just, because I feel like I can, having that name pulled out. And that would be something that we would have to decide on as a, as a group. I want it to be 100% random. I don't want to be getting my hand in there or our administration's hand in there, like, hey, this person's been tested for, you know, two times in a row.
Right, no, I can absolutely respect that. My question mostly is, are we tracking that? Do we, do we have, you know, justifiable proof to show, yes, this child's been tested seven times and they're negative? Or, because when parents are becoming gruff about the fact that they feel their kid is being targeted, do we have evidence to say, look, your child's not? Because we are hitting every kid within the program. Because we are hitting every kid within the program. I mean, is, is, do we have anything to, to stand behind that? To say that we're hitting every kid?
Spreadsheet.
Tell me about the spreadsheet that you have.
So we do have a spreadsheet. Every kid has been tested. We, we, we get that in there, we put it in the spreadsheet. If it's tested positive, if they don't, we just put it in the file. So every, every time we test, we know exactly who we're testing. We get a, we get a report or a paper immediately from Absolute saying the kid's name, the date, and if they're positive or negative. And so we track that, yeah.
So trustee Thompson, are you asking, are we? We're not.
Okay.
And by nature of the randomized, well, two reasons for that. That's a, that's a good clarifying question. I guess by the fact that it's random and by law, my understanding is we have to do it random. So if we tested 25 and then took them off the list because we tested them, so that we could get another different 25, it would no longer be random and we'd be in violation of, of, of a random drug testing program.
Right. But I would think through the randomization, there should be some ability to ensure that we're testing all kids.
All the kids are given the absolute drug testing, like all, all the kids that are extracurricular activities, all those students that are on those rosters, they're all given to them. So they have the entire pool.
Okay.
And then they're picking from that pool. So they are, they're picking from the entire selection of students that are in the extracurricular activities for that season. Does that answer your question?
I think trustee Thompson, if we were to test all, if I'm understanding what you're saying, if we were going to test all athletes as a preemptive to get into the athletic program, that would need to be something that we would decide and a policy change would have to occur. In order to participate in extracurricular, you will eventually be given a drug test. Because right now, we're purely doing random. So not every student, a student may go all four years of playing sports and their name never, because it's complete with computer randomization. So that would be a policy change. Looked at that they wanted to make sure that every student was in fact tested.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to understand how we could, if we're not randomly testing the kids, all of them, but there seems to become a handful of kids that are tested repeatedly. And maybe they're on the negative spectrum. I don't know. How that occurs and why is that occurring? I mean, it, it just seems that there should be some ability, I, I realize you get input for the kids you do need to keep an eye on and watch and make sure that the, the testing happens. But the kids that are negative, if they're being
Constantly tested.
Constantly tested. I don't see how that's beneficial for the program in its entirety with all the kids, if it's not all the kids.
Sure.
That's, I guess, I mean, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm pro
Right.
Pro this. I just want
I get what you're saying.
Like that they don't know.
Nobody knows.
Everybody has the same risk when they're drawn.
We don't even know.
That would have to be, that would have to be a conversation, I think, we would all need to have. And like after two negative tests and you get chosen for a third, can we now eliminate, would we feel in good confidence we can eliminate you from the random? Or if you did three negative tests and you get chosen for a fourth, can we now pull you out?
Well, and maybe it's not even a matter of pulling them out. I don't know if Absolute can speak to the, their randomization process. But if, if a child's testing negative, negative, okay, maybe this time we don't. Because I'm assuming there's a cost involved to this. It's not done for free. So that there isn't one or two or five kids that are constantly being tested, that are constantly being negative. I mean, let's, let's circulate this. It's, it's just kind of what I'm going at, where I'm going.
And, you know, Absolutely gives us alternatives. So if a kid was gone on the day that they got chosen at random, they give us like five alternatives. And that could be something where, hey, if we notice that those are the kid that's been chosen three times or two times, can we use an alternative kid that's been selected on the random?
Okay.
Chart. So I
Are you, can we come up just to speak a little bit about the randomization? Do you want me to just touch on the, it's electronically done?
Okay.
And I think the, the question may be, depending on how many kids are in each group of sports. So we're just doing, like I say, right now it's football and soccer that's happening.
Right.
There's a smaller pool there that runs the electronically. So that's why those kids might be being kicked out at the same time. Because you have your fall sports and then you have your spring sports. So it's not like, we don't do all the kids at one time. We're doing it that fall and then that spring. And that might kick that in there. It's why they're being pulled that time.
Okay. And this is just for athletics? This doesn't include all extracurricular?
This is all extracurricular activities. So you're talking, you know, BPA, you're talking drama, speech, band. Even, even our shop kids that, that we pay for travel to go and represent us and Boise in the competition, we create a pretty big season before that, that, that competition and, and put them through the same process.
Okay.
Other questions?
I do appreciate having parents put that, that up there. It's great to be in the administration. We love you dearly. It's nice to hear some stuff. On the other side of it. So I appreciate you so much. Thank you. I want to wait and see what you talk about. Thank you. Very hopeful. Thank you for that. And I think you guys said, I think some cultural things we've said in the school with this, they know that they're going to be accountable if they fall in line and you created a great culture that's going to be appreciated. Sorry for lack of business, however.
So it's a mandatory policy then?
To participate in extracurricular activities, yes.
And we took it, Mr. Derek Rodd to me. And I've told the board before, initially I wasn't on, completely in favor of it because I saw some downsides to it. And I didn't want to leave any students, and Mr. Derek and I talked a lot about it. I didn't want to leave any students who maybe had an issue, a problem, didn't have family support. And then the one way we get them involved in is keep them in. And I've seen it work in, you know, that way. But they took baby steps. I think something that's been super successful about this is they didn't jump, just dive in and go underwater. I mean, they really took baby steps, built the parent advisory committee, athletic advisory committee that Mr. Derek has that meets. So he had a lot of parent input, coach input. It wasn't just his way or the highway. I mean, he really took a lot of input along the way and created these things. And we had a little glitch a couple of years ago, worked with Absolute. I mean, Jimmy started a spreadsheet because we had some people complaining, oh, my kid's always getting cold. So every single obstacle that's come up, this entire team has said, okay, how can we handle that? So it was a policy three years ago that the school board, since I've been here, adopted. And they, Mr. Derek had come and do, did a presentation with his AD that Mr. Conroy had at the time. So anyway, I think it's a huge success. I am just honest, I wasn't a huge fan in the beginning and now they have won me over in the statistics and what Mr. Conroy said, Joyce, Joe says, it really is working at that school. So I'm, I'm a true believer now in, in this.
We're kind of trailblazing, trailblazing this. There's not a lot of schools in our area that, that do this and there's a reason for that. It's, it is extremely difficult and it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of teamwork. But as Eliza said, you know, we go to a lot of different schools and a lot of different parents come up to us or assistant principals and ask us how our drug testing is going. Our parents say, gosh, I wish, I wish we would do that here at our school. But I'm afraid, you know, I'm afraid that our team wouldn't be eligible or, or things like that. But since then, you know, as you and Absolute, they have picked up quite a few other schools. From our area since we started, Monastory's now adopting this program. Kellaw High School has now adopted this program. And then obviously it's in our district as well. I think we're on to something extremely special.
Are the kids, based on a comment that Mr. Quimby made when he was speaking with us, are they tested randomly, I mean privately? Or is, are there a group of them in the, the gymnasium?
So how it works is it's, it's right towards the end of school that we have to pull them out due to Absolute being able to come right in. And so our, our school date gets over at 1:35. We have Absolute setting up their table in our gymnasium. This is only closed off to kids that get chosen. And we'll just give them a call so that they have them go to the gym. So, you know, they are in, they are in the gym with us together. And then they go into the separate locker rooms with a professional to test. But yeah, that is.
Okay. So there's, to some degree, there's some disclosure of who's being tested. To the people that are being tested. I mean, it's not the whole team.
That would be a shame.
Okay. Okay. Who pays for the testing?
Our, our district budget does.
Okay. So that doesn't preclude any student from wanting to participate in any extracurricular activity because the district pays for it?
Right. It's not a cost to any families at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, we budget. And after we started the program, we budgeted for it. So it's in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lindsay should be first.
Yeah.
Your name should have been in the top field.
Actually, it's actually what's that?
That's okay. Do you have enough checks to cover your expenses?
I love it. It's one of my new favorite websites that I've passed on to my staff. It's called Slides Media. And they have all of these templates and everything that are already pre-done. And they have all of the code put in there. So if you click on this button, it takes you right to the slides. So.
Okay. So right now we have the Lakeland Joint School District Pre-K Program presentation with Principal, you want to introduce, or Twin Lakes, sorry, elementary. You want to introduce yourself? Sorry, Lindsay. I'm Lindsay McKeever, preschool teacher. Thank you. Please, Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening, trustees. Chair Olmstead and Dr. Meyer. I'm going to start us off. I'm going to, these two of the ladies are going to do the majority of the talking. I just get to talk a little bit about the historical part of the program just to kind of make sure that everybody has the same understanding where we've been and where we're going. So the preschool program in Lakeland has been in several different buildings. It was, we had a program down south at John Brown and then we had a program up north at Apple. And prior to Twin Lakes Elementary opening, Betty Kiefer had 550 kids in the building. Garwood was right about 550 and John Brown was hovering at about 500. And so we were quickly running out of room. So they moved the program from John Brown to the building where Child Nutrition Services is. And they started sharing that when Joan Lasson was the teacher at that time. And she taught there for lots of years. Once Twin Lakes Elementary opened and we really started to look at numbers up north, each year, the number of kiddos who were registering for the pre-k program there were going down. And we got to a point where I think we had three students slated to be in, at Apple. And so at that point, we thought, maybe it makes more sense to have the pre-k program in a more centrally located school and bus the kids down from the northern schools and just have them all in one school. Because we didn't have the numbers to really suggest that we would run two different programs with two different teachers. So it's been at Twin Lakes for the past few years once we moved it out of the, the pre-k. And, but really, it's just kind of moved around the district based on where the kiddos are and how many of them are where, where we had room. So right now, it's centrally located. It's working really well. And we have the right number of kids in the program. So they, they're managing all of that. A couple of things that I just wanted to kind of have in the back of your mind with regard to this program is there is a legal requirement when you do a developmental pre-kindergarten program that we have peer models in the program with the, with the kiddos who have disabilities. And we don't, we've struggled to get peer models in our program.
What is a peer model?
A typically performing child at that age level. And so as I've been thinking through that, last year, Dr. Meyer and Kat Gilmore and I sat down and Kat ran our literacy, our project for us. And we started talking about running an early learning center in our district and running it similar to the way we run BASE. Where BASE is a fully self-sustaining program that doesn't require district resources to provide service to our parents and our community. One of the things that we know about, when you look at our fall IRI scores for kindergarten, they're typically very low. Because for most families, the reality is that mom and dad are both working and kids are in a daycare, but not an academic focused preschool type daycare. And so we talked about if we ran an early learning center in our district in the northern part and the southern part of the district, we could maybe provide a service for families where their kids would be in a daycare type situation. But we would have an academic focus from about 8:30 until 11:30, where we're really looking at numbers and letters and those early literacy and literacy skills. And then also a lot of really intentional socialization, you know, learning how to take challenge. In year three, we do a lot of parallel play. And so just kind of learning how to be around groups of people. In my mind, doing that would have allowed us an opportunity to provide those peer models for our developmental pre-k. Because if we could have housed them in the same building, they would have had opportunities to kind of work together. So we put that on pause when COVID hit and we knew we were going to have to cut back on spending. It didn't make sense to start a new program when we were cutting other programs back. So I just want to plant that seed. But that's still something that I have kind of rolling around in my head that I would love to see us continue to move forward once our funding kind of stabilizes. Because there is some, a little bit of district money to get it started. And then we get the tuition and it starts to sustain itself. So that's just kind of where we've been and how we ended up at Twin Lakes Elementary.
So I'm Tiffany Mount and I have your principal at 2:00. Most of you very much. I promised Lindsay. Lindsay has just started this this year. I promised I wouldn't make your talk too much. So I appreciate you allowing this opportunity to come talk to you about probably the second happiest place on earth. There's Disneyland and then there's a, there's a preschool. It is my favorite place probably to be in my building. And I am so grateful the program is there. Justine Grissom's daughter ran it for us beautifully for two years. And I watched excellence in teaching. And now that's been continued with Mrs. McKeever too. So our typical day with Kinder, for your reflection later, if you look at this, you'll see on one side is our morning session times and then the afternoon. This is usually what our little darlings get to do. It's a lot of, you know, basic needs. Body training, advocating for your own needs, being able to verbalize through, either through your voice or through pictures. All of our teachers and aides have different ways for students to communicate those basic needs. So that's one of the things they're learning. There is music and movement and there's their letter sounds, there's, there's numbers, there's, there's center time, which is lots of play. These are all the things that they do in a typical two and a half hours. And it's jam-packed with education and fun. And if you are out and you would like to come and stop by and see one of the, the best things, it's just a, I always tell my staff, if you can't find me, my radio's off, just look in preschool. I'm doing an observation in there. So I've been very fortunate to watch the program in my tomb. And I was starting my third year there. So it's, it's very wonderful. We have 18 students in our program right now. We have four students in referral that are in the process of qualifying for the program. We have another screener coming up on October 19th where we will identify other students from the area to participate. And then we will have a, just one screener in the spring, I believe, that first, in February, for us to have even more wonderful kids come and join us. Okay. So name for toddler program refers, I should say. It refers and directs program, student Okay, so name for toddler program refers, I should say, refers and directs program students to us also. So, part of the advantage of having it in a school, and just piggybacking on what Assistant Lieutenant Sexton said, is the design of Twin Lakes itself already lends itself to having the peer program. So where it's housed in our building is different than our kindergarten rooms. Each kindergarten room possesses an individual bathroom in the classroom. This program has a bathroom that's got a changing station, lots of room for students with disabilities. We can bring wheelchairs in, it's, everything is set up there, and it's connected between two rooms, kind of a smaller room, and then a regular-sized classroom. And so, for us to have that opportunity to have more students and do the peer modeling, we can mix and match and do all kinds of things with the space that we already have allocated in the building for that. Being with a regular school allows the collaborative opportunities for Lindsay and her staff to participate in our regular staff meetings, trainings that I'm doing over student achievement, stay in line with the district mission, rather than being isolated by themselves in what where they were in the food service building. There are administrators on-site in cases of crisis, intervention needs, parent conversations, IEP meetings. Myself, Mrs. Rannan, and our counselor is available for any of the needs, just as we are for any of the K6 classrooms. We also have our office staff, who handle all of the birth certificates and shock records and IEP paperwork, just everything. The calling in for attendance and lunch counts, so all of that is there taken care of to help support the program. We have our dedicated play areas, we have a small playground there, we have some swings that are set up with the safety harnesses just for our little kids that are below kindergarten. We have large areas for students, we have a student who wheelchair this year who comes, and it's wonderful to have an easy access in and out, they're not going to overgravel or bark, it's all set for them. We also have on-site, that helps out with the program, and throughout the week, we have our school nurse. The speech program comes in, and they assist a great deal, that's part of the daily routine of the kids. Occupational therapy and physical therapy come to our sites. And so, in addition, rather than having one other location for these services to have to travel to and take up time and resources, they're already there, and it coincides with the care and the need that we have for our other K6 students in the building. One of the other great advantages to having the program in a school is the collaboration with our kindergarten teachers, both the Twin Lakes teachers and just the district collaboration participation. Lindsay can talk with those teachers about those transition goals, if she's studying IEP goals for those transitions into kindergarten, easier than if she was on an island, or the program was on an island. It allows for teachers to come to our school, spend time watching these kids in preschool. We started, we were beginning to start that before COVID started, that was our plan, is to have the teachers come, observe the students, the kindergarten teachers, that would be going to John Brown, would be going to Apple, so that we can make sure that that transition is as smooth as possible.
We, when Tiffany and I were talking about this presentation for the board, one of the things we talked about is that it's, there's a legal requirement when our teachers are writing IEP goals to include what typically-performing students do at that age or grade level, and then what their instructional goals are, and then there should be a way that we're going to move the kids from their instructional grade to that grade level. And so, it'll allow her that opportunity to collaborate with the kindergarten teachers. Those kindergarten, typical kindergarten benchmarks are readily available to her as she's thinking about how to write those IEPs.
And so, that is basically our program in a nutshell. See, these are some of our little darlings doing some of their activities, and, today, just after, what, calm and self-care and student awareness is a focus of our building this year, and not only self-care for the teachers, but for the students. And so, today, the preschoolers were practicing yoga. They were doing their yoga, little kind of flexibility. To.
And my parents as well.
And the parents were, were working on it. And so, just to leave you with that non-state kind of illusion of tranquility, it really is just a wonderful program, and we feel very blessed to have it here in our district, and I feel super blessed to have it in my building, so. Any questions? Or? Go ahead, ask Lindsay all you want.
Still new, I don't know how to answer this one.
Now, thank you for the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it a separate PDF or is it always? It was, but it did close off from us. That's made to do.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Meyer, here for the monthly financial report, and this is for September. And September is really the first month we start getting a better idea, a little bit of how we might track for the year, get more information on our expenditure side from our first really full month of all salaries, hitting when the teachers come back and get that first payroll. The other thing that usually on this report that we have at this time is we're pretty sure where our fund balance is going to end for last year, so we have that additional information for you. So, so go for the first page of the report. On the revenue side, not much has changed. There's not a lot of dollars that come into the district relative in September. You get your big payment in August from the state and property taxes that did arrive or accrue back in previous years, so really, there's some cash flow coming in, but not really charged, it's not worth it this year. You can see that, if we go to the bottom, that we're at 35 and a half percent year-to-date with. And if you look at our historical, last year, we were at 34.73, 2019 at 37. So, you know, we're, depending on how some of the dollars come in, and how big the state payment is relative to our budget, we're within historical, so I feel good about that. You know, you like to see sort of the same patterns that happen, and this year, a lot of patterns aren't consistent. On the expenditure side, we're at 13.46%. And again, you can see as in previous years, that's pretty similar. Actually, as a percentage of expenditure, a little less than previous years. I think some of that is that some of our spending this year, we have been charging outside of the general fund to some of those federal funds, and so as a percentage, that's why it's slightly lower, especially that 14 and a half. I wanted to focus especially on, well, before I go to our fund balance, on our, just on our salary side, I looked at September and compared it to budget, and in a perfect world, 8.33% of our salaries would hit every month for 1/12. And we are at 8.1%. And so, that makes me feel good, because if your first month you're at nine, you go, ooh, you're earning 0.7 above. But if you do that for 12 months in a row, that's a problem, because that's what we're spending. So, it looks like that, you know, relative to our budget and what we staff for, at least the first month that we're tracking fine, and actually a little bit. And that can be typical in September, just because some of your hiring hasn't come on, if you're hiring late. So, at least we're in the ballpark, you know, on the expenditure side. For, this is the first part now, that this number here is 5.3 million. This is what I guessed we would then start the year with, that budget, it wasn't our actuals. This is the actual number of what we're starting with, which is 5,663,516. So, last year, we were around 5.2 million. This is an increase of fund balance of $396,949, so almost $400,000 that were higher than last year. So, that's good news. If you look as a percentage of our fund balance to expenditures, we're at 15.9%, which is the exact same percentage we were last year. So, we did add a little bit, but we had more expenditures, so we sort of maintained our fund balance. We didn't increase it greatly, we're, or go down, so. I think that's good with some of the turbulence that's ahead on the finance side for this next year, there's a lot of unknowns. So, that, that's good news. That, our audit report will be next board meeting, our formal audit report. And Bottom will be here to present, and I'll be here to also answer questions. But that will be the number, you know, that will be presented and shown, and plus some other information for you that he's done in his presentation in previous years. As we, you know, again, you know, just graphically, you can see that on the different functions, we're definitely, you know, we start, at this time of year, start tracking towards our blue. And usually, when you start looking at this, that because administrators are paid year-round, and we have more facilities going in the summer, that's why, as a percentage, why it's sort of closer to the end than the instructional programs of elementary and secondary, because really, the teachers came back, and our big expenditures throughout the 12 months will be salaries in those two areas for our elementary teachers and our secondary teachers. Same thing, expenditures by object is a different way to look at it, as opposed by function. And again, sizes and benefits are the bulk of our expenditures, and we're starting to track along those continuums. But again, I don't see anything out of the normal, except for the whole pandemic, which we'll talk about in a little bit. The one thing that I'm, you know, a little concerned about, which I know Dr. Meyer has, you know, been talking about too, is our enrollment. So, the enrollment is actually from October, you know, since we're in October, I got the most recent numbers. And we are at 4,386. Last year, for our enrollment numbers, we were at 4,617. So we're down, right, about 5%. Now that things have sort of settled out. We actually, if you can see from the previous month, we're at 4348. We actually, you know, gained a few kids, 38 kids, so a few have come back. That 5%, I've been talking with my peers, I had a Zoom meeting with other business managers in our Region 1, that's similar to Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls is also down, Sandpoint's very concerned. So it's sort of, there's a lot of, there's been, you know, some families that have been choosing to hold off, maybe homeschool. And if you look, like, we're down 75 kids in kindergarten, so as far as some of our enrollment. So I think there might be a lot of families that, let's say, maybe there's a kid who's a little young, they just said, well, maybe I'll redshirt him this year and wait until next year for the COVID, I think some of that. And then there's all those bubbles, but that was actually, I asked Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene, did they have less kinder numbers? And that was, I remember, Wendy from Post Falls said, yes, I can't remember Coeur d'Alene, but I wouldn't be surprised. Since we're going to be paid on enrollment this year as opposed to attendance, actually, that 4,300 number is sort of close to our attendance number. So, dollar-wise, it may be okay, but we just don't know. There's a lot of unknowns with the formula and an aspect of our funding formula called protection. So there's just, there's a lot of unknowns. And, you know, as soon as we know, the board will know on some of those things.
On the online academy learning LOA, that's not represented there.
That is part of these numbers, I believe they're right around 300?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that, I sent them an update this weekend.
Okay, so, but they are included in these numbers.
Okay, I just didn't see a line item.
Oh, I didn't put it, no, because they're, well, when I pulled the report, I pulled by homeschool, they're still officially part of the homeschool.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Dr. Meyer's been taking the kids and sort of pulling them out. And I could, on this one, I could, I could do a line item later, that would help.
Well, I understand that they're included based on their homeschool, even though they're in the online. I'm fine with that, I was just thinking, there's no online school there, what about those people? So, okay, thank you.
And then, was there any questions on just the finance report as far as any of those right now? And then I wanted to just quickly go into some of a quick review of some of the COVID dollars and cares money.
The levy, the 8.9 million, is that the one that's coming up in March?
Yes.
That's on there, okay.
Correct.
That's the last year of this one that was passed in March of 2019. We're having a levy workshop from four to six before next meeting, to, I'm going to present information to you all from four to six.
Yeah, so that's our supplemental levy, and that is the amount that was approved by the voters.
Okay. And then I got another question, and I don't know how they handle this, but what about all those people that don't pay their property tax sometime?
Well, then we have.
And then they do pay, but before the next, you know, what happens to that? Do they, do they? Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, that, what happens is it's really, we don't receive the dollars then, and it's called, and then when they do pay, we do then receive the dollars, and it's called deferred tax. And we actually have an item in our audit called taxes receivable, which are owed but haven't been received yet. And, so interestingly, in IO, we're required, if we want to collect the whole 8.9 million, we have to budget that that's what we're going to receive. That's sort of how IO does it. When I was in Washington, you, you would certify to the county how much you could receive, but in the budget, we would budget the dollar amount what we think we're going to get. And so, like, historically, we might receive 98 and a half percent of collections, so I would budget that number. We actually have to, by law, I have to just, the voters approved 8.9, and if I'm going to ask for that, then I have to have that in my budget. Generally, though, the past few years, we have been receiving our, our full amount. Some, but during the recession, there were some low collection rates. So that is a possibility, but as people do pay, then the county would distribute to the various agencies that get, receive those dollars.
So it does basically come in as they get it, so to speak, they're not making us wait until December.
No, we, we can, every month, we get, you know, a little bit of, not just the big taxes. So when you see some of this other local tax, eventually, some of that would include, this is really counting this year's, for this year's authorization. So let's say we received $100,000 from 2012, it would be in this other local tax, so just, I just have that other thing. But that's more one of the places that the taxes receivable is coming. Yeah, and so you always have a little bit hanging out there, because that's never 100%. On the COVID and the cares money, I wanted to show this, maybe I should. Okay, that shows better. This is a slide from the State Department, when we, when Governor Little had what he called the COVID relief dollars, that was the $100 million or close to that, that was coming, that was this fall, not the cares money that really we knew about several months ago. And part of all, both dollars, the cares money and COVID relief are federal dollars. The Governor Little was passing through some federal dollars that he had discretion on towards the schools, which was very thankful that Governor Little, he could have chose to spend it in other ways. Those dollars, but there's still strings attached, because they're federal dollars. So the coronavirus relief fund expires in this calendar year. So we have to spend those dollars by this. So, we have to spend those dollars by this calendar year. The elementary and secondary emergency school relief funds, which is the CARES Act, they expire in September. So, we really have another year and a half to go, or almost two years. So, the State Department, you know, as you can see on their slide, use these first, because after December 31st, for all intents and purposes, you can't use them. You can pay a salary in, you know, let's say, December payroll and then make your claim in January. That's okay, but if I paid some in January, I could not charge these funds anymore. So, what we've been doing is some of the dollars that, and we can go back all the way to last March. So, some of the dollars that we spent from the CARES Act last year and even this year, I'm transferring those to these dollars, which the state said we could do to. So, now the CARES Act can last longer. And I didn't have this as far as in the board packet. But of that, of the left here, these one-time funds that are the chrono release funds, we're receiving 1.448 million dollars. Almost 1.45 is the formula. It was based on last year's enrollment. Of that 1.4 million, we've already identified we're going to be transferring made claims for 1.2 million dollars. And that is for the big ticket items have been technology, Chromebook purchases, technology device for teachers, technology licenses for some of the remote online learning, outdoor Wi-Fi upgrades, network upgrades, the costs we've been charging for our hotspots. You get, those are quite yourself on the bill. Those monthly costs, as long as I can charge those to the federal dollars. We're doing that as long as we can. Chromebook charging cards, Chromebook chargers, our Google Classroom that can sync with our student information system. That software we had to purchase, those were used. Teacher computer upgrades, some Chrome tablets. We also, so that's sort of the technology side. On the PPE side, we had some electrostatic sprayers for disinfectant. We've had PPE cleaning supplies this year. We've had lapel mics for the teachers. We've had our alcohol, all of our lights. The face shields, even the football player face shields that we purchased were charging to this, which were several thousand dollars. And so, those are, you know, I was just giving you an idea of where the dollars have been spent. Also, there'll be some of the per diem days that are planned for. They haven't been spent yet because they'll be issued in next month. But those are part of that 1.2. So, I mean, it's obligated and to have been spent. So, there are still some, a little bit of that 1.45 left that were, I'm asking maintenance right now to see how much, like, the isopropyl alcohol is expensive, the paper towels, you know, any PPEs out there, but how much storage do we have that we could buy and sort of maybe get us through the year and not have to use general fund dollars? Or the cares money could be used for other thing than that? So, we're trying to look at that. And then also, I'm sure Dr. Meyer will have some other ideas on where we'll be using those dollars. But we are, we're not sitting on it. We've been using the dollars. I just wanted to give you a background that it really has been helpful. And, you know, the COVID has had true costs to the district from just a pure bottom line. Some of these resources didn't come in, and you had to buy some of these things, which you were for sure have to. Well, then we would have been really cutting into fund balance of the general fund and using those dollars. So, it has provided us a little relief and a gap and helped us with uncertainty. Because we still, you know, we're early in the game, and we'll see what happens with the legislation and our enrollment. There's a lot of unknowns out there. I feel good that we're ended close to where we were last year a little bit better. So, I think we're good shit. I'm available for any questions?
What is ESFRF?
That is the, oh my gosh, it's federal. It's the Elementary and Secondary Emergency School Relief Funds.
Thank you.
There we go. Yeah, forgot. I was glad they had it up there. We're glad we remembered.
Because I'm looking at that going, okay, we have non here, and we have it over here. What is it?
Yeah, the, if there's an acronym, somehow we will make it up.
Yes, we do.
One thing I did update the board, and Mr. Wallace sort of mentioned it, and Jason Bradbury, the association president's here, and Miss Sexton. But we worked as a team, and I did update the board. The governor put out something from the governor's office, like, so there was a lot of information in a lot of different districts, like, do you give the full thing to the staff? It really needed to be where the funding was paying for cares related. So, I just want to make sure everyone that's watching, as well as, I know the board understands this, but I just really want to reiterate that all of that funding that needs to be spent in our district, the 1.4, has to be that checklist of those 12 things that I showed you several months, several, and it has to be for that. So, the reason that the staff, every staff person got two days at their drop daily rate of pay is because they, we related it to cares. So, we didn't just say, oh, everyone gets two extra days. It really was related to us discussing with the association and directors and principals. Really, everyone in the district has worked so hard, and you guys know this from the summer in August, for everyone to put in that extra time. So, really, giving those extra days is related to cares. I just wanted to reiterate that we're in line with what they wanted us to, you know, what our obligations are, the parameters for spending.
Sort of our pattern, what we've been spending on is some of their districts. You know, when I talked Friday with my peers, you know, one district is even going to, you know, buy a school bus because they had to add routes for social distancing. We don't have time to get a bid in to do that by the December.
Couldn't try.
Yeah, we'd have to go fast. Well, and it's not just getting the bid in, it's actually receiving the bus. That's the problem.
Oh, you pay when you take receipt of it.
Correct. And this is saying you need to receive in time. So, I don't think they'd be able to build it fast enough, because they start building them and they give them the order. They don't just, it's not like going to Dave Smith. But anyway, there are, you know, so, most districts are, you know, definitely it was disinfectant, the PPE technology has been a big one. And then, you know, staff have been taking on extra duties and trying to help out on that side, or even just positions that you needed because of maybe school nurses or some online things or technology staff. It's, but definitely, everybody's been talking how it's directly related to, you know, the pandemic and the guidelines that the federal, you know, authorities have given us.
Do you know what the upgrades were to the Wi-Fi and the network? And if not, you can always email me.
Well, yeah, I can get Justin. I mean, some were some outdoor Wi-Fi upgrades. So, that was really to, it was to extend our Wi-Fi network so that it was better out in the parking lot. So, to make a hotspot if they parked in front of the school, it was good. Before, we weren't really blasting outside. So, we actually added some antennas on the outside of the buildings, and we did that in all our parking lots.
And we did that in March and April because, you know, especially at Quinn, they weren't, couldn't get any, so, so they had to drive up and put it in one spot so we could advertise to the parents. If you go to Timberlake High School, this is where you park. If they could, you know.
So, this is one of the costs that we paid last year of different dollars that, since I'm able to go back to last year and collect on these, that's what I'm doing. And frees up those dollars that we freed up for something else later.
My other question is, do you know what the, what was underneath the lime yellow block on the slides? The bullet point?
What was in the green?
Yeah, right there.
You know, I, I don't know. I, yeah, I can go look at this slide. I don't know if I received it that way, or I remember I just grabbed this slide off the web. So--
But something was highlighted in white font is what it looks like.
Yeah, or something that's like, or they just decided that it wasn't applicable anymore. I don't know. I was curious.
And there's a link, so. Your science could bring it up.
No, that's if I'm going to add a link. Which one I want to link it to, sorry I messed with. Yeah, I don't know. I think it might be, it might be the, I don't know if you should show it. I think it might be the total amount up here. Like, this should be like 90 million. Or 98 million is, I think that's what it is. I don't know why it did that pretty thing.
I think it is available on their site or somewhere, because it looks familiar, the whole slide.
And I think this is the total. This should be like 48 million. I bet, I almost guarantee you that, because this is almost 100, and this was around 48. I don't know why I blocked it out.
That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, if you received it that way, you don't know. I was just curious.
Or, or could go in the board, look at it.
Yeah.
Not like it. I don't know. But yeah, I think that's what the two things are.
Okay.
Okay.
Our report does have it. It was the board book thing.
What's it say?
So, 98.7 million, 12 special distribution is the first one, and then 43 million flow-through is the second. Good job, Chrissy. Sorry about the board book.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Revolving door. Okay. So, I told the board that I would come and do a presentation after our professional development. So, based on, we had staff feedback. Our professional development, which we do every year, but this was an interesting year. We have had a district-wide focus, at least for one of the days, and some days it's only been one day every year I've been here. This is the first year we've done, yes, there was a blended learning focus, but we really did it in per building. And the principal was, and the admins and the directors were in charge of how did it work for their building. So, we had some interesting feedback that I think that the board will be interested in. Our mission remains our mission. I just want to remind everybody that our mission is every maximize student learning every single day, every single student when they're in our district is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally in all environments. So, our mission, these two days, we're really still focused on what can we do to help support students and families through this COVID experience and the blended learning. Overall, how satisfied were you? And you can see that there was quite a bit of satisfaction leading up to the three, fours, and fives for SPAF. How relevant? And you can see it's still, the trend is up for the fours and fives for relevant. But where the, where the real feedback comes is in the comments to read through, and I read through every single comment, and I put them into groups. And it's, I know it's kind of small, but one thing I just wanted to say, and we'll go through a few of them, the key takeaways for people. I, what, it still comes, I want to give you an overview, is it still comes to a lot of polarity. I felt like, I mean, we've talked about this at the board meetings, is there's still, like, yes, I love the two days. I absolutely want to go back to one day. I love to have in my building, work and collaborate with folks. I miss the district focus. So, there's still kind of a lot of polarity in the responses. And I don't know whether to attribute that to, we have a big district, we have a lot of different perspectives. Some things work for other folks, some things don't. Or whether we're looking at it is related to the COVID, because I found in this, in the district, we have more polarization and polarities than more, less in the middle of bell-shaped curve. So, I don't know what to attribute it to, but I just thought it was interesting. They liked, some people thought it was just invaluable to be with their peers. But then there's adjusting to new ideas and programs, integrating technology. I loved this one, which we talked a lot about. It's actually in our reel over there in our puzzle pieces. So, we talked a lot last year about the pit, struggling. And it's okay to get down in the learning pit and struggle. And that's where we have some of our most productive struggle when kids are learning and adults. And we come out the other side and better for it. So, I thought it was interesting that someone used that and then the growth mindset. Blended learning, this is a very, very, a lot based on this. They learned that blended learning is not just recording lessons. Like, there's ways to integrate technology and do blended learning with my students. It's not just putting the lapel mic on, narrowing it down, and saying, "I'm just going to record my lessons," and that's blended learning. So, there was a lot of comments about that, which I thought it was, you know, Ms. Sexton and I liked that because it really felt like people were expanding their knowledge of really what it meant to be successful at blended learning. This is something we say all the time. And Michelle Stanford, our TIC, her member, technology integration coordinator, she says, "Don't let technology take over. It's just another tool in your tool belt." So, it's just another tool. One thing I did promise the board this year was looking at SOS and how that was. Every single elementary staff person was required to do the gatekeeper training for SOS. So, from 1:00 to 3:00 on Thursday, everybody participated in that. There was a lot of comments. Some people said, "Hey, it's the same thing we had when we did our QPR or we had our suicide." The lady, Kim, from the State Department came and did a piece. Some people thought it was repetitive to what they learned. And then there was a lot of comments saying it was actually more in-depth, and our building got to talk about what it meant at our building for gatekeeper training. So, they thought it was more valuable. This one, I really liked how we taught each other. A number of the buildings, they all sent their agendas to us, to Lisa and I, and they were having teachers teach teachers. So, one thing that you found at almost every building was, "Oh, I know how to use Flipgrid," or "I know how to use Kami," or "I know how to use..." So, that they were really showing little mini lessons to each other on how they used it in blended learning, and what was working, what struggles, what pieces didn't work. So, it was, I really liked the fact that the teachers were teaching teachers throughout the buildings. Working in your building, so here, working in your building is much better than district-wide. More relevant, okay? And then the very next, you know, down a couple more. I like last year better with the different districts focus. So, the very next, you know, and preparing us for our students. This is one thing I put in the intention for all staff in the district communication, which I shared with you all with the board, is I really wanted staff to be able to, hey, let's just take a deep breath. I want everyone to be able to stop, take a breath, and just like re-center themselves, refocus. And like, we have, since March, there has just been a really, and I wanted this to be a time for them to take a breath, and I specifically said that. So, there were a few people that said, "Thank you for giving us time to like just take a breath." And there wasn't a district focus where everybody was there. Of course, we were, couldn't be able to do that because of this social distancing. But the last couple ones I put in is that people really realized by having this time that everyone was struggling through similar concerns, and they really shared that. So, we're going through this together. So, what would you change for next year? This is similar. They're in little chunks, like, keep it at two days. And then the next one says, "I don't like that we have two days in a row." So, I honestly would think we're going to, before we plan this out with the calendar committee, I do believe that we'll need to do more of a staff survey, whether the building principals do it with each staff or we do a district-wide survey. I feel like there's a lot of polarity, and we need to know. One thing that I thought, and I thought Lisa would really like this, is either a day in August or if we do one of the days in February, because when they're learning reading, and as a primary teacher, she really appreciates this, when they're learning reading, those two days off and the two days on the weekend are not good for teaching reading. And they said, "It would be nice if those days were broken up." That's the first time that I got that feedback, specifically about teaching reading, um, especially with, w- losing all that time in the spring with the COVID, so I felt like that was pretty valuable feedback. And I think we should consider not having the days back-to-back based on that one input that we got, I thought was very valuable. Um, I like this one, this is the first year ever that I actually got the time to go back to my room and interact with new ideas, because we want it to sink in, sometimes with PD, it's like and then, it, all of a sudden, it's like you're back into your classroom, and how do you get that, and I really wanted them to be able to do that, so I really appreciated that comment. Um. And you can see, uh, Chrissy will share this with you, but you can see how there's, some people really like the district focus, some people really like this focus of having building-level PD, so. I like, the last one I put here that I think's super important, why would Ms. Sexton and I design PD that didn't work for the teachers if the entire thing is designed, is supposed to be to support the teachers? So, we definitely don't want to have anything that's a top-down PD that, uh, is good for us, because it's supposed to be to support the teachers. So we have to get their input and, based on their input, design for next year. So continue to trust teachers to know what they need to do. Sometimes we just need the time to pursue our school-wide goals, I felt excellent use of our time, I'd like to see this option. So I really feel like, as we plan to go forward, we need to make sure that the teachers are happy with how we move forward. Um, as far as classified staff, and having classified staff, we do need to have a little bit more structure back again, um, that was a lot of comments for classified. Because in the last, uh, four years, uh, we have had a district-wide program where classified has really been able to expand some of the things they've learned about with behavior, QPR, suicide, if students talk about it on the buses, or in the buildings, or, so, uh, that's one focus that, uh, Ms. Sexton and I will have for next year, for sure. Any questions about that feedback? Anyone? So thank you to everyone, and Jason, and anyone who's watching, thank you for your feedback and, and giving us that. It's really valuable to have that information. All right, the next thing is, um, the reopen plan. And, um, I did call the other suit for attendance, suits, that's my sake, uh, in the surrounding districts, and they have been using this. It, we really have, as you know, a guest teacher shortage in our area, and the COVID has even uh, contributed to that, because some guest teachers that we normally have maybe aren't willing to go into the classrooms in the past. So, similar to the last couple of times that I've brought, uh, the plan back to the school board, I would really like to add, again, this is federal guidance, um, the essential critical infrastructure workers. And the other districts are using this, I would like this to be in the approved plan. But workers who support the education, um, that can be parapros, it could be office admin assistants, it could be teachers in the classroom, um, i- anything that's providing the education to our students, if we don't have a suitable replacement that we would be able to, if they're asymptomatic, they're not presenting symptoms, but they were in that contact tracing. Okay, so it's not anybody who's tested positive, it's just, you were in that contact, close contact, within the six feet from one in fifteen minutes, but you're asymptomatic. Um, I think I shared with the board, we did have staff that wanted to come back, but they were nervous if it wasn't um, board approved, that there might be some stigma against them, so uh, you know, some people are asking that this isn't here, so if they're asymptomatic, that they can. The these areas that we would be taking care of ahead of time would be, they would have a separate entrance into the school, they would take their temperature ahead of time, they'd do regular monitoring, they would wear a mask, they would stay six feet away from the kinos. Um, they would social distance, extra cleaning and disinfecting, and they wouldn't be sharing anything, they would go to staff meetings. Um, it would be, you know, pretty isolating, but yet, if they're teaching reading to a first or second grader, and we have no guest teachers that can do that, um, and again, we're completely maxed out for space, um, and the teacher you know, wanted to be there, that would be an option if this was approved in the, um, this plan. So, any questions on that?
And this is just a copy and paste from what already exists.
This is the copy and paste from the federal guidelines for essential, and I just wanted to make sure that other districts were doing this as well. Um, and I guess, they had to have that in the initial, um, plan in theirs, and I didn't have it in there, so. And I, I guess I did change this word, was isolate, but based on Trustee Thompson's word last time, I changed this word to quarantine, so there, there was one word that I, I think it's twice in here, I changed the word for isolate to quarantine.
Thank you.
Then it's consistent with, in the plan. That was a
I guess my only concern is requiring an employee to return to work that, because of all the views that we currently have, if somebody does not feel safe returning to work, I don't want them to be afraid to lose their job because we're requiring them, I know it says may require.
Yeah.
But I don't I don't know that we should give them a, basically, an ultimatum.
Right.
You know?
And we certainly could change, I just copy and paste, like you said, but I'm, I really wouldn't myself, I professionally and personally wouldn't want to require somebody who didn't feel comfortable coming back. I only am actually putting this in there for staff that have asked me that they want to come back, but then they're worried that their colleagues are gonna get upset if they're coming back and it's not in this plan that we, that we can do this. So I'm, oh, I'm definitely open to changing that way that wording is, to say what you're saying, cuz I definitely don't want to require somebody.
Districts may allow, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
And I'm happy to do that as the board, uh.
Cuz that doesn't make it sound like quite so polite.
Cuz it really is coming, this is stemming from people asking me permission to come back. So does that take, districts may allow an employee? That feels better to me as well.
Yeah. I must be talking.
Oh, did you give us so many problems? Oh, man, just go away!
Twenty-twenty has lost.
I know, hopefully, hopefully twenty-twenty's the magic wand that just makes all of this disappear.
This kind of, I mean, I respect what we're doing here, and I appreciate it. Um, but I'm a little concerned with, um, the, um, how it's gonna appear.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when we have parents that are frustrated because their kids are asymptomatic and they can't get back to school. They have to go to a doctor, and they have to get, you know, permission to come back to school. I realize these are workers, we're talking about two different, um, beings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's my only hesitation, I, I respect that we need to operate the business. Um, but I'm a little concerned with that, which kind of segues into the whole, we needed a little chit-chat about contact tracing, um, because there seems to be some, I don't know if confusion is the right word.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't really necessarily know that we're doing it correctly. Um, and so, I'm not against this.
Mm-hmm.
Please don't interpret it that way, I'm just curious how it's going to appear when we are saying, okay, the teachers can come back, a lot of teachers have, were, well, teachers were the ones primarily that were voicing their concerns, that this is not, you know, we can't, nada. Um, and you know, like, but I understand we have to operate the school, I understand that our guest teacher pool is dwindling. We even have one still.
Oops.
Um, so I, those are just my concerns.
Yeah.
So.
Understandable.
Um, and yeah, I definitely do not wanna require anyone to return back to work. Um, if they're asymptomatic but have been, you know, exposed to COVID and they're not they themselves do not feel safe returning to school until they know that they know
Yes.
that they're not sick.
Yeah, so far, I've only had two employees this year that would have taken advantage of this.
Okay. Well, and I know, um, um, my daughter was exposed, and so, but she wasn't, she wasn't in the six-foot parameter, and she wasn't in the fifteen-minute ratio, but she still chose to wear a mask.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, she took the liberties to take her own precautions.
Yeah.
Even though she didn't. I wish more people would, would be more proactive in that thinking, but, um. So, yeah. It's my two cents on the matter.
I some, I somewhat agree with that, other than the fact that, I think the only difference being is that the others are minors regulated by a parent, and this is an adult making a decision. We didn't tell the other ones, well, other than they have to be negative.
Right.
So we aren't telling these guys they have to be negative, but then they have been exposed to, please take these measures. That's a hard one.
Yeah, it is hard, there was also one verbiage that I thought was, um, interesting. I can't remember if it was here, or if I went on my treasure hunt and clicked on the CDC link.
Oh.
But it talked about, um, you know, it's recommended that the temperature, you know, be taken before you get to school, but if it's not taken, you know, it's like, I thought,
Yeah, I agree.
can we have a little bit of consistency, like, just take your temp before you come to school to know that you're okay to come to school?
Yeah. Ideally, the temperature check should happen before the individual enters the facility.
Yeah, I think it just should say, the temperature check should happen.
Before they.
Before you come to the facility.
Yeah. Instead of saying, yeah, just, yeah.
Thank you. And when we're stating a medical mask, is, I, I know we took this from the CDC.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Do we wanna specify exactly what time, what, like?
I think if we're consistent with up above, it says face covering, mask or shield is what it says.
Okay.
Up above.
Mm-hmm.
Is that face covering would be parentheses, mask shield would be consistent to what we had up above.
Correct.
The medical mask would be in ninety-five.
Right. I don't think we need to do that. Again, I don't think this is gonna come up often, where, where we found it the most is with teachers who teach reading, and that's a pretty specialized skill set, and we're already, I mean, Lisa feels very strongly about this, because we're, and those teachers don't want to, I mean, I've even had teachers saying, I, if I still have to use my sick leave, I'll do it from home over Google to my kids, because they don't want their kids, I mean, they're so conscientious, they don't want their kids to miss this opportunity. So I'm just thinking, I don't think we'll use it for after, but I feel like at least if there's a way to do it, they come in the separate outdoor entrance, they don't go to the staff meeting, they make sure their temperature's down, they're asymptomatic, they come in, they are farther away, whether we have to put the plexiglass, or whether they have a thing on, and they say, okay, kids, you have to stay out there, but they can teach reading to their kids, um.
Can I just add one little thing, having kind of lived through this, um, cuz I have a daughter who was home from college who tested positive, and so, um, just two things that are in my mind, just that I would want you to kind of consider, one, we're talking about the critical workers who have been identified by the federal government as such, and so it's the, all the frontline workers, um, which I think makes the difference between what we're doing with kids, what we're doing with teachers. But the reality for us is, um, when I found out that my daughter was positive, I immediately wanted to get tested, because I've been in and out of schools. They won't even test you if you're asymptomatic.
Right.
You have to wait five days, ten days after the positive test, and it was, it was five days after she started showing symptoms, so I mean, it's a lot of time that we would be out of school, and we had one principal who's called seventeen different people to fill one teaching position, and couldn't find anybody, so we really are, it, when we're talking critical infrastructure, we're really critical. So, that's one, maybe two points.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the reality is, teaching is essential. We've opened the schools, we need to have the ability to teach the children. Um, as long as, I think, protocol is put in place, but we are not requiring people to maintain work if they don't feel
Mm-hmm.
that it's safe for them to maintain.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, that's my two cents worth of it. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to negate their, their essentialness, cuz they are very essential.
I think I'm fine with, with the changes that we made in the position that the district's in, and being able to, um, continue educating of the students who are required. And they need to be educated, they want to be there, and I think a lot of the teachers, like you're saying, want to be there too, especially these certain, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It gives them a, a way to come back, um, or to stay, uh, because we know that not everybody gets sick.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I know of a family where one student was very ill, and the other student in the household who ended up staying home because of the situation, um, both tests positive, the other one, nothing. And the one, the, one sibling was really sick, yeah, so everybody's, you know, reacts differently to it now.
Um, when we come down there, decision to return employees to work will be made in consultation with the staff person, school nurse, local, local public health district, and public health considerations based on specific COVID-nineteen related concerns in our area. Um, so we're saying we have to get permission from?
No.
Okay.
This part with in consultation just means like, if all of us are in red, and we're still in yellow in our district, then that might be something that I would bring to the, to the table of like, okay, the cases in, have severely gone up at this school or this district, that's all that's saying, but we're not, we don't, the board actually is the deci-, as you know, the board is the decision-maker, so, um, I, I, I did even inform the board that the, with contact tracing, that we're not giving names. Um, the other districts are, and I just don't feel comfortable with that, cuz I promised parents that we were not gonna do that. So even though the local public health may ask for things, I'm not just following through with that unless it's gone through a board discussion, and the board feels like that's what's in the best interest for our families, so. That's, this will just, this is just saying that we're, we will take consultation if they have issues or concerns about our district, or the numbers, or the level, or something to that effect.
Okay, then can you change the will to a may?
Yes.
Okay.
God love Michelle.
So that be, and.
I do.
Yeah.
But two words, right? May be.
Mm-hmm.
Not maybe.
Right.
Okay.
May be. It could be considered.
Any other thoughts? Okay, all right. Um, just to Mr. Wallace's, the next thing is, we, um, just, he did say we're at four-three-eight-six, and we look at this obviously quite frequently. We thought we were gonna be at forty-six-hundred, so I had said we were down nine percent, we're down four-point-seven percent now as of Friday, so closer to that five percent, not nine percent, it's four-point-seven percent that we're down. We're at ninety-five-point-three-four percent of where we thought we were going to be, so that's a lot better, um, than nine percent.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other thing is the, um, LOA visitation schedule, I have received that today for the Lakeland Online Academy, which remember is K through eight, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven kids, K through eight. So we have a visitation schedule, and I'm gonna share it with the board after the meeting, so that any of you that want to go drop by and have a visitation to an LOA classroom, they've let the parents know, and they have a schedule of when they're synchronous, which means they're doing it not asynchronous, but synchronous at the same time, real time. And I will share that with the board tonight, and then you would just, just for safety, you would ask, um, Patty Morrison for the code to get in, so you would come in and you would be in there as a visitor. And that's just obviously cuz they're closed classrooms, they don't let everybody just go in, so. I'm gonna share that with the board tonight, the board had asked about possibly visiting, doing a visitation to LOA classrooms. Um, one last thing here, is the, um, we, I always do an, uh, annual October parent survey. So we're gonna do our annual parent survey, but I'd like to be able to, and I'd like to send it out tomorrow. Um, I always do it in October, and it'll give them a week and a half, almost two weeks to do it, like, one day shy of two weeks. one day shy of two weeks. I'd like to get this back sooner rather than, I usually give a little bit more time, because I'd like to have this input before we have our board levy workshop. I think it'll be important this year for the board to be able to have this parent input. So I'm going to cut off a little bit, about a week of time. But in talking with other folks, if you give too much time, sometimes they forget about it anyway. So if we just have, it'll be almost two weeks open if I send it out in the morning. So I'm hoping that the board is in alignment with that. And I'd like to share this with you and just go through, I find the best feedback from you all is actually at the meeting. So even though it takes a little bit of time, I would really like to, if you don't mind, I see one guess, I'd like you to do this now so that I have your, okay. So Chrissy, if I do this wrong, let me know. Okay. Chrissy helps me with the survey monkey. What I like most about our district, these are consistent with the last five years, we've asked the same exact questions. I think this could give the board longitudinal data about what, if anything changed with it. Teachers and staff is always the highest, it's usually like forty, over forty, between forty and fifty percent. That's what they like most is teachers and staff. Character of the students, level of academic rigor, educational opportunities, extracurricular, family atmosphere, overall district, and then other. So just stop me if you want something else. Then if they want to have comments in this area, comment box, that's not required. This one is, these are required. If it has a little star over here, this is not required. What I like least about our district, same exact questions. And then we usually get some comments here, so they describe what it is that they're, you know, don't like. Then we do this overall satisfaction, extremely dissatisfied up to extremely satisfied. They get a quick, Chrissy did stars this year, which I think is great, overall satisfaction level. And then this one is a little bit different than normal, and I think it'll help give feedback, valuable feedback to the board. I'm completely open to other suggestions if you feel like there's something else we should add here. We're asking them to prioritize, because we really feel like it's important that the board knows what's really important to be in the instructional levy in March for our families. Maintain small neighborhood, and we did this two years ago when we did our parent survey, I've got this information, these are the same things we ask. But again, times have changed, so maybe we want to add something else. Maintain small neighborhood schools, maintain reasonable class sizes, maintain current staffing levels, maintain current extracurricular and school activity programs. So we put this in, we added a little bit of ending this time, kind of what it's at me, well, the staffing, the coaching, uniforms, travel costs, athletic trainers' equipment, that was, those were added with the last two levies, so we want to make sure and maybe give a little bit more information there. Maintain or increase safety and security at our schools, armed guards. Now, the district safety task force team has other things that they have prioritized, surveillance cameras, some other things, but those are plant facility levy issues, not instructional. We didn't think we should confuse the patrons by putting things that can't be paid with the instructional levy and put it as there, in there. This section is actually going to speak to that when we do the presentation to the board on October twenty-seventh. But, so this one really specifically would be about adding, keeping or adding armed guards. Maintain full-day kindergarten program, which we clearly deleted out because that's a big cost, and that's part of the instructional levy for the last four years. Address deferred maintenance in our facilities, and then curriculum or other resources. So is there anything else that you feel like we should add to that list that you would like to know how important they think it is? Anything you guys feel like we want to add?
I think you covered, I think it covers what they voted for last time and things that we might have heard here or there.
Yeah, I mean, pretty, it's really comprehensive.
So when we're asking to maintain small neighborhood schools, as far as priority, what are we prioritizing there? Would that be adding new schools?
Nope. And I could put that on there. My concern is if I put that on there, people might think that we're trying to talk about running a bond again.
Right.
This maintain small neighborhood schools means that, right now, our schools compared to surrounding districts, we have small neighborhood schools where there's reasonable class sizes in comparison to our surrounding districts in this area, is really what that means.
Okay.
And remember, you know, David Brickman said, you can't say, if you don't pass this, we're going to take this away. But really, what this is saying is, you as patrons, you're supporting your district to have small neighborhood schools because you've paid, you're paying this levy in order to us to have smaller schools close in your neighborhood versus us having the boxes and we, you know, transport you to a school and there's forty kids in a classroom and it's a egg carton, kind of. So it typically, that is the number one every time I've done the survey. That is the number one thing is small neighborhood schools. Every single time we've done it. That has been the number one thing that's come up.
Okay.
And to your point, Trustee Thompson, maintain reasonable, I mean, maintain small neighborhood schools is also kind of relative, but people can picture that in their mind, what their neighborhood school is. When I say maintain reasonable classes, that is a little nebulous, because some people may say, think, you know, you talked about sixteen, some people think that anything less than thirty is still small, and you know what I mean? Like, that's really not very, it's very subjective. But I also don't want to give it a specific number because some people get attached to like, well, you said it was going to be, so, yeah. Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Additional input. And then if your child attends a school at which, we added these, which we were going to do a separate survey from the district safety task force team, but I asked Lisa today, can we please, I don't want to over-survey our parents, can we just put it, can you pick out the most important questions and can we just do it all at once? So I think this is important because the board spoke to this in goal setting for the year, that this was important. So I think these are great questions. If you have any feedback, Lisa's totally open right now. But if your child attends a school at which we have an armed guard, please answer the question on a scale of one to five, being the highest, how would you rate the importance? So not important all the way up to vitally? If your child attends a school at which we have, please answer these questions. Understanding the cost of adding additional personnel to our district, from your experience with the armed guard, please choose one of the following. Is it a good use of taxpayer dollars, good use and would continue, or do you want to add to it? So those basically three levels, and that gives the board feedback. Does that sound?
Yeah.
Good. Trustee Kristen, you look like you maybe have, do you want to change anything on that?
Nope, I think I'm fine with that. I was looking at the last, the last one, yeah.
With the SRO thing?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's fine.
And I think, Lisa, will you speak to why you put that on the last one about having the SRO because of the MOU and things with, will you speak to that part? Just because then they know why I did it then.
So we currently have an MOU in place with Spirit Lake Police Department to have an SRO up there. And then Cooten County has very graciously funded, fully funded, an SRO between Twin Lakes Elementary and Garwood Elementary. And so I just want to honor those partnerships. Personally, I love having the armed guard there because they don't get pulled away from law enforcement activities. And when we have law enforcement people in our schools, they tend to get pulled in right away within the discipline, which isn't really the purpose of the SRO. So, but I didn't want to negate the great things that are happening with those two partnerships.
It's like, it's amazing, making those community relationships with Laura Long.
Yeah, yes. And then I just, in the question above, where Dr. Meyer had been, where they, she asked them to kind of identify, in this one, I think we had the armed guard in that one.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Chrissy and I picked the two questions that we chose because you're getting input from patrons across the district, some of whom have never had any exposure to the armed guard program, don't know anything about it. So I did want to hear from the families that are impacted by that program to give you a good sense of whether they love it or they think that we should move on to something else. So that's why we chose the two that we chose.
It wasn't that part of the full-day kindergarten and the SRO and all, that was part of the levy originally?
Yeah, the armed guard, yeah. The SRO actually is funded through the Safe and Drisy Schools Grant that this section fills out every year for our district. But the armed guards were all on the levy. Okay, the instructional levy.
On the last question right there, and it's just, understanding the costs of adding additional personnel to the district, and from your experience with the armed guard at your school, to me, those are two different components. So I'm just wondering if we might be able to clean up that statement so that we're specifically targeting, you know, the cost of the armed guard. Do you think it's beneficial for your school?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make sure that we just.
So, help me. So, understanding the cost of adding additional personnel to our district, please choose one of your, one of the following responses and just take out.
No, 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 no. Understanding the cost of adding an armed guard in our district, and from your experience with the armed guard at your school, please choose this. Because to me, adding additional personnel, that's anything from, you know, a parapro to a teacher. Is that what you're going after?
No, what I am saying is, I want them to be really intentional in answering this question, because if we continue to add armed guards, there's a cost to our patrons for that. So that's what I was trying to say, was understanding that if we're going to add additional armed guards. So I can change.
She just said additional, yeah, cost even just using, instead of using personnel, because it's too broad.
I'm so.
Well, I guess, I guess what I get, where you're trying to target this is to get people to understand that everything comes at a cost. So if you want more, right.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to, that's why the responses are, one, I just don't believe this is a good use of taxpayer dollars at all, and I don't want you to continue the program. Two, I'm happy with what we've got, but I don't want to pay for more. And three is, I think we should have one at every school, and I think we should continue to grow the program. But I wanted to bring to mind that to grow the program, there's a cost to the taxpayers. So if there's a better way for me to say that, I would be.
I'm not sure, but.
You know what, I think you could just leave the first sentence, if your child attends a school, please answer the following question, and they know it's going to come. Then you say, I do not believe this position is good, and not continue, it's good, and then adding, I think you don't even need that second sentence.
So you could say, understanding the additional costs to our district, and from your experience with the armed guard, please choose.
Well, I guess just say, clean it up and take that second sentence out, and just ask the question.
Yeah, I think you could change those three things to put it right inherent in there. And they don't usually, I mean, we know people don't read. I don't think they'll get past that, they'll just look at the three things and see if they can answer it. So I think that's more right, yeah. But anyway, we can clean that up because it's good to have external eyes, because you're reading it from a different perspective than they are, so that's.
Right, but I don't want to lose her focus, because I do think it's important to clarify with patrons, everything comes at a cost.
So what if we said, if your child attends a school at which we have an armed guard on staff, and based on your experience with that armed guard, please choose one of the following responses? And we could take out the additional cost. I would, I guess I'm assuming, and I hate to do that, but, you know, the last.
Okay, how about we do this? Start with, understanding the cost of adding additional personnel to our district, comma, if your child attends a school at which we have an armed guard on staff, please answer.
Choose one of the.
Yes, choose one of the following responses. So I think you're still keeping your target on there that you want them to acknowledge, and you're shortening up to where we're just asking a direct question. We're specific to the.
Yes. And Chrissy's got it, she's doing it right now. Understanding the cost of adding additional personnel to our district, if your child attends a school at which we have an armed guard on staff, please choose one of the following responses.
Perfect.
So is there anything else at the board that you want to ask parents specifically that we haven't addressed, that you'd like us to add? A tenth, I don't want to make it too long, this is nine questions. Two are pretty, you know, they're pretty quick questions, this one might take them some time to prioritize. But is there anything else that you would like to ask related to anything? COVID, upcoming levy priorities, anything that you feel like you want feedback on while we have parents that are going to answer questions?
I don't know if you want to just add a box for parents that just state, you know, comments or something like that, so that they can just provide feedback. But then again, that might be opening up the doors.
I was thinking that, are you pleased with the way that things are being handled with this current?
Pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, well, I think that a lot of people are silent. I think a lot of people are pleased with the way it's being handled.
True.
And I think that a lot of people are happy. And I think that, obviously, from some word hatred and feedbacks, some people are unhappy. And I can respect that, like you said, there's a lot of polar views. It's one way or the other. I do believe more people are happy with the way that it's being handled than not. And it would be nice to have that reflected in that survey, but I also don't want you to get barraged or us to get, you know, overwhelmed with a bunch of feedback that isn't going to be helpful for either, for any sort of decision-making, so.
Yeah, and I think they do have an option like up here, what I like most, and they will say, if they're happy, they will say things about, and I shared with the board, an unhappy patron, and then with the last thing I sent out, and then I, right after that, a very happy person. Definitely two polarities from two parents, back to back, within a minute of each other, right after I sent out a letter. So I think people will put them in here. Trustee Major, I think they will put them in here.
Great.
So we'll have that feedback.
That's super. I think you did a great job on that.
Well done.
What was the team effort? It was, it was.
Whoever did it.
Yes, it was.
Good job, y'all.
All right, that's all I have for tonight, just letting you know that once we have this information, I will share it with the board so that anyone who wants to read all the comments and has time to, certainly can. But also, this will go into, we, I started a while ago, present, getting the levy presentation ready for different ways to present to you, ways that the board can think about how we'd like to proceed with the levy. And that board workshop is from four to six on October twenty-seventh. This parent feedback will, I have a spot already, and it will go into that presentation in the board, the synopsis of it, the data, but then all of the comments, obviously, you will have access to those as well. Okay, thank you very much for letting me do that tonight.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to actual items, which is the consent agenda, we have mentioned in previous meeting, and the HR items, and something that's time, we're touching all reservation letters for book, so the trustees can see between the reasons for the reservation. Can we improve this block and we need to break it down?
Yeah, Madam Chariot asked that we remove G three, four, and five, which have to do with the board clerk and the executive assistant job description. If we remove those, I'm good with approving, and, you know, still discuss them, but after the agenda, and then we can, I have no problem with approving the rest of the block.
We're on the consent agenda?
Right, isn't that, those are part of?
No, they're consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm still getting used to this layout here. I was thinking, oh.
You're going to get it all?
Yeah.
So the consent agenda is the minutes.
It's just the bills and the HR.
The minutes, we're going to see the HR items, and then we're writing the special bills.
Yep, I'm good with that.
I have just a question on the, all the resignations, is this common? To have this at this time of year, all these resignations?
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
HR Director Cunningham could speak to it, I know she's on, but I know from talking to her what she would say, is there is a lot of COVID-related concerns family members or themselves as staff.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's, absolutely not, usually at this time of year.
I did have a couple of questions on the bills. Mr. Wallace, on the August mileage for a couple of the patrons, they seem quite high, is that normal?
Some of our big mileage often is our athletic directors driving to other sites for activities. And then usually go to the, the large mileage checks, and possibly maybe some of our nurses and tech people can put them quite a few miles.
Okay, because yeah, there were two that kind of stood out to me because it was like.
Usually it's if, yeah, usually they're driving like off or.
Okay, all right.
But you said patron, so you didn't mean patron, did you? We're paying patron mileage.
No, I think it's staff.
Did I say patron?
You did. Yeah, but I just making sure it wasn't, that we weren't doing something that I, like.
Well, no, I don't.
We're paying patrons and I didn't know.
I'm, I don't, okay, let's clarify here, I don't know who, my little thing is wrong with me, I don't like this. John de Vilbes, de Vilbes?
Yeah, he's our high school.
Oh, okay, good to know, and Paul Galpin?
Yeah, he's a technology support and.
He's the one that did all the beacons, and he still, that he's the tech person that's. He did all those reports I gave to board when he's putting beacons up, remember last year, and all throughout the summer, that's, he goes all throughout.
I was just curious because it was just targeted to August, and I thought, what are we doing in August? I mean, I know we were all scrambling, so I just, and are we reimbursing at the federal rate? Or do we have a different reimbursement?
We, yeah, we do the federal rate.
Okay.
I only look once a year, I look in July, I don't adjust it in January.
Okay, just curious.
Is that half penny? Or whatever.
Well, last year to this year, it didn't change, so.
No, it didn't change, but yeah, we look at, for the start of the school year, we look at July, and we, we take that.
Okay, and then we had to reimburse for a bus bid, I don't understand that.
Yeah, that was our last bus bid.
Okay.
We, we asked, we required a bidder's assurance check.
Okay.
So that there was a serious bid, and it took a while for us to get the, the buses didn't get delivered till August, two of them, so we deposited the check and we released it, they paid us in full, then we gave their security back. It just took so long to get it, usually we give it back in, when they deliver it in, in May.
Okay.
But two of the buses, this, because actually because of COVID, the factory was delayed, and we received just in August.
Okay, so the way the buses, because I'm still turning around my head around all the things we do, they deposit, they give us money for purchasing a bus from them?
Correct.
Okay.
For the, and the reason we're doing that is, part of our contract has that they have to deliver the buses in a timely manner.
Okay.
And if they missed that.
Oh, okay.
We can actually charge the money back.
Okay.
If, so we could have, in this case, that would have been probably unreasonable, given it really wasn't their fault.
Right, right, right.
So we didn't, but that's sort of why we haven't given the money upfront, to actually sum the teeth to that cause.
Perfect.
So is it like a deposit they give us to promise it's going to be on time?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if we don't, because if we don't get the buses on time, we get.
That's okay, no, that's all good.
Right, well, just, you know, we get depreciation money from the state for our buses. But they have to be on the books by before June 30th. So if we get late delivery, that could cost me a check from the state for a year.
Sure.
So it can be a big deal.
Sure, with deadlines and all that, a lot of this cares money, trying to order a bus with a check, it wouldn't work. Yeah, okay, I see, so that's why they do that, because it could cost you money, I see.
And the state this year, they waived that requirement, they knew that happened, and they still allow us to put the buses on the books, so they're really no hard no foul.
Yeah, and they'll be speaking to this in, actually, I'm, this is both times.
Well, we all learned something new because I didn't know that happened either, so.
That's cool.
Yes, I did not know, that's the first I heard of that, my entire career.
I'm, I'm hoping these are related to sports, but the field trip meals, I thought we weren't doing field trips.
Yeah, that would be the.
That would be, that'd be in that base program.
Okay, for base.
Because they're still, if they're turning in, I'm, base might be doing it, and they're.
But it also could be the meal money for the extracurricular teams.
Meal money for extracurricular teams.
Okay, so when we're doing extracurricular, we consider that a field trip even though nobody's really going anywhere except to compete in some sort of.
Compete in different, and it's five dollars per meal for students.
Okay, all right, because I'm like, it's August, we've had how many field trips? Doesn't make sense to me, so, okay.
That's why everyone wants to come to Lakeland.
Okay. All right, I think that's, that was my question.
So can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Everyone can say, and anyone can say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? During that motion carries.
Sorry, I'm nonfixed, I, I, I march myself and I can't make myself smaller. I can't see anything. Oops. Okay. What is that? Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Worked okay?
Perfect.
Okay, on to action items now. So the first one is to approve or deny the updated LGSD 272 Fall Reopen Plan with amendments.
Yep, I'll make a motion that we approve the Fall LGSD, Fall Reopen Plan with amendments. I'll second that.
Motion's second, everyone can say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? During that motion carries. Uh, who'll be next? Approve or deny the emergency provisional per employee 10.13.2028?
Yep, he has been doing that this year, and he is enjoying himself immensely. And so we need to do, PE Health is a K-12, and so he's doing a, a emergency provisional for a fifth grade.
So he's going to be teaching PE Health to fifth grade?
No, he's going, the emergency provisionals for him to be a fifth grade teacher.
Oh, okay.
Classroom teacher, he's not doing PE and Health, but he's enjoying himself immensely.
Well, that's a plus.
And he might be continuing, we actually have two elementary, three elementary PE, PE Health teachers that are teaching in the classroom that are all enjoying themselves. And Ms. Sexton and I have walked through and watched them teach, and they're doing a phenomenal job, so.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve the emergency provisional for employee 10.13.2020A.
I'll second that.
I have a motion at second, everyone can say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? During that motion carries. Next is to approve or deny the posting of the clerk of the board position.
Okay, we have some feedback on that.
Yeah, and maybe the description hopefully. And then first, yeah, so, we, just based on conversation that I've had with the school board, also conversations with knowing, with Chrissy, and conversations with the district leadership team. Also knowing this year, what we've had for COVID since March, and the parent, the number of parent questions and communication that's gone out, also the amount of information that I've, job responsibilities that I've added to plate. I, I fear the position, once the COVID is over, and all the, everything that's, all the, everything that's going on with building out and the enrollment is going to surge, in my opinion, is going to surge, seeing all the new growth that's happening. That, on top of the fact that we did, not, we have the budget cutbacks, we have the five and the six percent budget holdbacks. We did release some admin clerical and admin assistant for some of the district level administrators, and those were replaced. So part of my recommendation is based on filling back, filling in some for as soon as with disability, the assistant superintendent, federal programs director, and everything at the district level to be an admin assistant for all of those spots, not just for the superintendent. And then adding, increasing the community relations liaison, because that was a piece of this that really has come, it gets pushed to the back burner, and pushed to the back burner, pushed to the back burner. I voiced my concern with anyone who will listen that we really, really need to do a good job of educating and making aware our patrons for the March instructional levy. It is 30% of our budget, current budget is 30% of our budget, and that is how we maintain small reasonable schools and have reasonable class sizes, and maintain the staffing and the programs that we have in this district, part of which we've talked about tonight, and giving priorities from our parents. But I think it's going to be very important that we make sure that we are keeping factual information. And again, by law, we can only do factual, we can't say vote yes, we can't do swaying one way or the other, it has to be factual information, and so, and also then increase the amount of communication that we're having with, with our patrons. So my recommendation, and I'd like to at least discuss with the board, is the amount of time, and I don't want, I don't want us to talk about anybody specifically in a public meeting, but the amount of time that that current position is with half-time assistant, executive assistant, and half-time clerk is turning out to where it is way more than half, than a full-time job. And the amount of flex time that I owe right now could not be made up. And every time I go to give flex time, something else happens. Like one time, I'm going to take this one day off, I promised Becky, and then we have a special board meeting. So, yeah, and I feel like that, baby, I mean, trust me, I feel like that. So I feel like, I mean, we also have a lot of, something that this board has been good at is policy work that has not, that has been on the back burner, and it's coming to the front burner. That also is very important, as you pointed out, pointed out, trustee person, it's like, that's one of our main jobs is the, is the board policy. That also needs some attention, and, you know, we have a subcommittee, and you two have been doing a great job. But also, if we had somebody, in my opinion, who was the, that we hired, a clerk of the board that could also speed that process along to go through that as well. And if the person was half-time, they'd be a little bit more accessible to the board at any time type of thing, you know what I mean? Instead of having the additional something more than half-time. So it's just a thought, I feel like it would really help as we prepare to get ready for the levy, the instructional levy coming up. And I do feel, I talked to Mr. Wallace, and the funds are available based on the fact that we had those cutbacks, and now we've had money back from the governor, so, you know, he spoke to that, and we do have a little bit of money left in there. I spoke to the association and explained the why behind it also as well. And I feel like it would be a good move for us as a working group, so that's.
Well, I feel maybe we did, I, setting up the agenda did a disservice with the way it was set up, because we, with the organization chart, it was very clear to break apart that clerk job and the admin assistant job. So that was something that was very apparent, we needed to break that apart. So then we want to make a different job description for each.
Right.
And with the admin assistant, executive assistant job, assistant to district admin, who had the, added with the community relations part, it's just become overwhelming for one person to handle. And with all policy and everything, we really do need somebody that's just designated clerk of the board.
Oh, I agree, I think maybe we need to hire an executive assistant and not a clerk. And if you look at the job description of the assistant superintendent, it actually includes all of those public relation information and things that Dr. Meyer pointed out. Under public information of the job description for the assistant superintendent, there is a liaison. It's items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 8. So I understand, and believe me, I've thought about that too, just watching Chrissy in her position. But I, I, you know, and there again, I would have to think about it, time I, uh, would arm wrestle Dr. Meyer for Chrissy for clerk.
Well, and she, I'm not even saying that she would be, she might want to do, I mean, this, if we open both positions.
Right.
Or put both positions out there, she certainly could have her preference.
So I think there's probably several things we need, and I know time, once again, is of the essence here. Yeah, but a lot of those, and there again, that puts a lot even on Ms. Sexton because she does all these other things too, and I think she's probably taken on more responsibility since the job description was initially created. It's, yeah, on the website underneath the, the human resources, where it lists all the job descriptions.
And that might not be up to date of what current, you know, we haven't, we've come across this with other physicians where, myself included, like, I don't, I think my job description I haven't read ever. And we talked about that together.
Right.
No, but what you do in reality and what it says in the job description, so that
Right.
is going to have to be another undertaking, because I don't think, I don't think what her job description is might not accurately reflect.
Exactly right, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but when we imported to the new website platform, the final site, our tech director just imported what could have been on there for the past 10 years.
Now, I don't know.
Something really good to check into.
So it might not be the most up-to-date job description anyway?
Right.
Is what you're saying? Okay, so she'll check into that, but I guess my point is, is that this really is more than one, a one job.
Absolutely.
And I think that if the board, the next step would be the board would just, would approve the two job descriptions, and then we could post, you know, yes.
Well, I'm a little concerned about making the clerk of the board an employee of the district. I do realize that by statute, we may pay the clerk, but it doesn't state in the statute that the clerk is an employee of the district, and I think there is, there's some distinction there, because I think when you bring on the employee, you're not only, I mean, you've got sick leave payroll, I mean, you've got a whole bunch of expenses tied in to bringing on a new employee. Whereas the clerk of the board, according to statute, could simply be one of us. Not that one of us wants to do that, nobody wants another hat, but I'm saying, I, I'm a little concerned with the, number one, creating a job description, making it an employee of the district, not, I mean, we're supposed to be picking the clerk, and at this, in January is when the new clerk gets appointed as is the new treasurer that, I've never seen our, our current way. I know we have one, but she's never attended the board meetings, so, and I don't know that she's required to. But I, I'm, I am not comfortable making the clerk of the board an employee of the Lakeland School District. That being said, I don't know where I go from there, so.
Interesting thought, I wonder what employee, where would she be employed, where would someone like that be employed from? I mean, maybe you don't know that either, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
Well, the clerk is appointed, so they're not necessarily employed, but they can receive payment for their position.
Oh, that we do that for free though.
No. I, I said they can receive payment for their position, we are allowed to pay them. But it doesn't say that you're making them an employee of the school district.
Oh.
So that's where I'm a little, I mean, do all the other districts have their clerk of the board as an employee?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, like, as a job description, you could apply to be the clerk of the board, you can, you can do your thing. And so their board doesn't appoint the clerk?
Yeah, it, the, the appointment is more of a statutory where they say, here's where we, this is the person that's hired as the treasurer. The board reinforces, yes, we have, we have confidence in this person to remain the treasurer. Board hires, the, the, the clerk is hired, again, remember, I'm your only employee that you hire and hire. So you hire the clerk, we do interviews, we have the clerk, and then the board says, yes, we have confidence, this will be the clerk of the board. Court Lane has the clerk and it's, it's, they were, she works closely with the board. I mean, granted, there's eleven thousand students there, we have forty-three, sixty-three, forty-three, eighty-six. But, but, you know, the clerk is still, has to be evaluated by, like, me, or it could be Lisa, or it could be Brian. I mean, it can be, it would have to be somebody that's in with the school, with the state board of the state department of education that can sign off on an evaluation. So the board could.
But I don't show anywhere in statute that says that we have to do a evaluation on the clerk.
Yeah, I would be, I can certainly follow, I've never heard of a, I just don't understand how that would work. I don't know any school district that does not have a clerk as an employee of the district.
Okay.
But I don't know if we could, certainly do some research, but I've never heard of that before.
Brian's been back there shaking his head too, like, yes, she's right, she's right.
Yeah, I mean, some small districts, the board clerk may be the business manager and the clerk. Or, and Granger, I know, the tech director is also the board clerk because it's a small district.
Right.
So, you know, generally, the board does appoint a clerk. So it could possibly, depending on the situation, maybe it changes from one employee to another employee. We organize something, an employee, we're gonna pay the person, outside of idle law, we have two ways to pay somebody. By federal law, by the Federal Labor Standards Act, they can either be an independent contractor or an employee. That's the either one. If we're directing their work, they're, and we're really doing it by that, by the Federal Labor Standards Act, at some point, we're directing, they're not independent just to show up when they want to do the work, they're an employee.
Correct.
So that's why they're employees.
Well, and this is the post- staying at the position, that doesn't mean that somebody that's out working in the district can't apply for that, correct?
Right.
Correct, it could be in-house, but the, when the board says that, we're saying, these are the the assistant treasurers, the treasurer and the board clerk at your annual meeting, you know, that's reiterating that these, these are the positions that are there. Perhaps there's been turnover that, you know, Cindy Happing, who is my number two in the department, you know, if she, you know, retires or resigns with the lottery, you know, we would fill that position and we would, you know, you'd have a new name the next year, same as the board clerk, things like that. So it's sort of a, the board appointment is really just validating that we have these positions and it's formed.
Okay. Since we are working so close with the clerk, it would be really nice if we could have, like, some input. You know what I mean, that we can be part of that, and like, we could inter, health interview and just be a really big part of that. Just because, you know, we're working on becoming cohesive as a group. And so this person coming in, we would want that everybody would feel like it's a good fit.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
And I was thinking if we, if the, with the job description, that we could post the position and the board would be the actual ones to interview the clerk.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that you would be doing the questions, you would be doing the interviews. We'd still follow the protocol that we have for the HR protocol in the district. But that would be a process, and then, you know, if you're half-time, even if there was a time that you're working on a lot of policy at one time, or there's something coming up, there would be the ability for that person to go over half-time or under half-time and be a little bit more flexible through the year based on your calendar if somebody was, because there are people that are looking that do not want a full-time job and maybe they're think, oh, I love this kind of legal stuff and I'd love to work with the school board. I think it's gonna attract a lot of people, myself, personally.
Yeah.
Well, the evaluation would be from the school board and then whoever at the district level, whether it was myself, Brian, Lisa, Patty, you know, whoever it was that was going to be doing that, the board would certainly be the ones evaluating, doing the primary evaluation also with that person.
Well, I mean, we didn't give any input at all on the clerk description. I guess primarily because I'm assuming Chrissy took everything that she does and she morphed it into this three-page job description that is incredible. I mean, I, I question whether or not, well, I don't know.
Chrissy's a superhuman, that's what she's trying to say.
But like, term of employment, the employment goes from January one to December thirty-first because they have to be reappointed. You can't take that away from the board to say, well, you're gonna be hired as the clerk of the board and every year they're just gonna say you. I, I think that's minimizing our authority by, and I guess maybe that's where I'm going by this person being an employee. You know, they're from January one to December thirty-one, and then we revisit this come January one, or, you know, whatever. So that's where I'm kind of a little concerned and maybe frustrated.
We're not trying to get final approval tonight. This was the first time I'm bringing it to you, I gave you a heads up that it was coming because no surprises. So I'm giving you, I gave you a heads up it was coming. I, Chrissy, actually, I asked her to get clerk descriptions from all, a lot of surrounding districts. So she actually gathered, had her screen open with like three or four different things. She pieced together what she thought was important for this district. And now this is the time where we're giving it to you and saying, we are totally open, you can certainly take this the next, we don't have to do it tonight, we're just giving it to you as a suggestion, I wanted to bring up the idea in an open session, tell you where, why, the why behind it, and then you guys can give a ton of input, you can change things. I mean, you may say, no, this, we're not giving this idea at all, I mean, that's the board's prerogative. So I'm just telling you that this is what we have to start with, but it's just draft form for sure. And the January to December thing is a perfect example of something like, our brains think school year and you're thinking that, so that's perfect, perfect feedback, yeah, yeah.
So it needs to probably be in the job description that this is assessed on a yearly basis and it doesn't mean, you know, based on your performance and based on what the board thinks. Because, you know, if you're gonna take a job, you'd like to know that.
Yes, exactly.
Right, surprise, December thirty-first, see ya, nice knowing ya.
Yeah, so we'll put that in there for sure.
Okay.
I had another question, I know that Chrissy's also been helping with part of the nurse, the helping nurse Judy with everything that the COVID has brought to the district. Didn't we just hire a point eight nurse? Yeah, we actually hired a point two and a point eight and another, so we had Nurse Judy. And we hired another one point O, and I don't know if you remember, they started late, so we didn't have any help with that contact tracing. And then we hired a point eight, which is four days a week Monday through Thursday, and then we had a point two, which, I'm not supposed to say her name, but she is, she's, she's a Meyer.
I'm learning her for a minute.
Yeah, and she was just, we have her in our approaching group and Nurse Rob is the point eight and gets to be with his kids on Friday, and then Marilyn is a point two and she's a Meyer. Oh my gosh, she was the sweetest thing ever, anyway.
No names.
No names, but I don't say their last names, I just said their first names, but they are very pleasant. And then Nurse Kelly, we have, and Nurse Judy's been here forever. They are absolutely phenomenal, we are so fortunate. But the, we still do need for contact tracing. I, you've sort of alluded to it earlier, there are some families that get pretty upset because they don't understand like, why if they don't have any symptoms, and so Chrissy's actually, besides Lisa, she's the next best, the two of them, like, getting people from not falling over the edge and just are really good with parents. So she's been helping a lot with that as well.
Well, with respect to that, I, I am concerned on the contact tracing, that we are properly doing it because receiving emails that, you know, we're not even talking to the children that we're saying, you have to quarantine because somebody else said you were within, or whatever. I don't know that that should be proper protocol. And I don't really know what, what we do with contact tracing. And I also had a question, why your letter states that we send out, it's the same letter, but that they'll either be contacted by Nurse Judy or Panhandle Health District if we're not reporting to Panhandle Health District.
So why, it shouldn't say that in there?
I think it's, it's, well.
But I, I can address that later, because since that's not in the statute, I can definitely address that later.
So let's go back up to three, so the motion is to approve the night posting of the clerk of the board, do we need to? Are we wanting to table that, postpone it to the next meeting?
I would request that we table posting the clerk of the board position and the job description of the clerk of the board.
Let's do three first. So we're gonna postpone. So I need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to table the posting of the clerk of the board position.
For how long, are we, until next meeting?
Till the next meeting?
Well, the next meeting is in two weeks, can we do it from the November meeting?
It's next meeting. Could, could we keep it on to the agenda for next time? Because if we're getting ready for the instructional levy, we're gonna have to really get somebody going on the communications piece to help them. So we could at least talk about it next time if people have had time to read it. If they're not ready, they could still table it again.
So that would be the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, I have no problem tabling it until October twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, everyone in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed, make, motion carries. Next is the to approve the night, the job description for the exec, no, job description for clerk of the board.
I think we'll do the same, that way we have time to look at some of the other. I briefly looked at some of the other ones, I think a lot of it's covered, but we can just sort of compare what's out there. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we also table this until the next board meeting of October twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, everyone in favor say aye.
Sorry, trustee Thompson, was that you seconded?
Yes.
Anyone opposed?
There's not in the motion carries.
Next is to approve the night description for the executive assistant to district administrators and community relations. That is a job title. One year tired.
I guess they all sort of go together.
Yeah.
So we might as well, yeah, postpone it also until, I'll make a motion to postpone that also until the October twenty-seventh meeting.
I'll second that, have a motion and second, everyone in favor say aye. Aye, anyone opposed, bring that motion carries. Next is to approve the night update policy twenty, twenty? Two-two-one-zero school closures, sorry. So yeah, the first grade last, this item was actually tabled last time, so the policy and the company procedure could be looked at further. Trustee Thompson or trustee Kristen could speak, any changes?
Yep, it was the wording, the or other emergency, and we were trying to figure out what the other emergency was and we went back and forth and we decided, oh, well, the wording's just clunky. You know, so we left emergency, we, we took out the or other emergency, but we put in that the superintendent may order the emergency closure of the schools in the event, blah, blah, blah. And we went back and forth with, you know, well, what is the emergency supposed to be? And we looked at open meeting stuff, we were like, oh, the word was just in the wrong place, I thought, now it makes sense.
I'll make a motion to approve the update to policy two-two-one-zero for school closure.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, everyone in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, bring that motion carries. Next is to approve and deny the twenty, twenty, twenty-one organization chart. This was tabled at the last meeting, so that the clerk and executive assistant could be separated out. I'm gonna move the second page because it was kind of just a repeat. So I can have my motion to approve the organization chart.
I'll make the motion to approve the organization chart as presented.
I'll second now, motion and second, everyone in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, bring that motion carries. Next is to approve and deny the donation of two thousand dollars from the Kootenai Tribe. The side of the commission board each year is a donation that is accepted. If you have questions, Becky can speak to it. Dr. Meyer, sorry.
I guess one of my questions is why do we have to approve a donation?
Very requires us to do it every year and it goes to the Lakeland Education Foundation, it's been in place since I got here and we just.
No, I mean, why is it just not doing its thing? I mean, why do we have to approve it, it's, I'm not saying let's not take the.
Yeah, the history is, it used to be a larger donation, it used to be well over ten thousand dollars and the tribe was sort of spread out. And since it was sort of up there, the donation was historically to the district, but for the foundation. So we're, your crew was sort of giving us the authority to move it to the foundation, which is really a different account. At this smaller, at this point right, it might be a little more de minimis. But we've done it for so many years, we just continue.
Okay. And then it goes to a specific program?
The Lakeland Education Foundation.
Okay, and what is that?
Which is the teacher grants and the student scholarships, and it's the foundation for Lakeland, it's the education foundation.
So it's actually a 501(c)(3), it helps with like college scholarships for some kids who earn them, and also we've done teacher grants for some, like, if they had an innovative idea and it could maybe be seed money for them to start a pilot program or something. And that's where the, the foundation is. The tribe money, there's also a lot of donations have gone if they do an annual fundraiser.
Okay. And then do we follow it back with them, with feedback? I'm just curious, because that's what their letter asks for, do we do that?
So this year, this is the second year that Pam Noah is the president. The superintendent, according to the bylaws, is the clerk of the foundation. So I've been taking minutes and doing all of the clerk stuff for the foundation for the last five years. Lisa is on it as a member, and then we have several past people, and Mr. Derek, Rachel Smith from Spirit Lake is on it, and then several people in the community, Lisa's not, anyway, there's several people on it, we meet quarterly. And so we actually have a meeting, if anyone wants to attend, we have a meeting this Thursday here at five-thirty. But Pam Noah writes a thank you card to the Kootenai Tribe every year, we all sign it, so.
Okay, so we just respond to them with a thank you card, yes, not necessarily what the money was used for. Okay. And I'll make a motion to approve the donation of two thousand dollars from Kootenai Tribe.
I'll second now, have a motion and second, everyone in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, bring that motion carries. Next is to approve and deny bid process for the first bus, which we've learned a little bit about already this evening, but Mr. Wallace can speak for this. Hello again.
So we, business bus pictures purchases are such a large ticket item, we've always brought the RFP to the board before we've gone out to bid. So if there's any questions before we advertise in the paper, obviously, when we get bids, you're under no obligation to accept any of them, we'll come back with, with who bids and then if you approve that. We do have the dollars in our bus appreciation fund, it's a separate fund. For this year to purchase three buses, we have, you know, the funds, so it doesn't impact the general fund. It's those dollars. So that is what we go for. The specifications of the buses are very similar to the four buses that we just purchased last year. There hasn't been a lot of changes as far as the specs.
So will these be added to our fleet or are we replacing buses?
Replacing. So part of the, of the bid we'll have is, we'll do an addendum as we get, once we get the bidders out and know who's bidding. We'll say, please also give us a trade in value for these three buses. We'll ask our mechanics, what are the three worst? We'll give the details to the, to the bidders. And I think actually we got about $2,000 for a bus that was, you know, that helped soft the purchase price.
Is there any change in the form from last time compared to this time, other than the specs of the bus and things like that?
No, they're similar to, you know, just dates and the timeline. You know, we checked our dates. Some of the timeline's a little different and delivery date's a little different. But otherwise, the, the base language of the RFP, we borrowed a little bit from what we did, what Posthaus did, McCordland did. And we sort of mashed it all together to sort of our bid documents.
Yeah, seemed pretty thorough.
Yeah, so we, we tried to, you know, have sort of a legal ease in there and to protect ourselves.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I will make a motion that we approve the bid process for the purchase of the school lessons. I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Make that motion carries. Okay, next is discussion items. First read for the update policy of 1140 for vacancies for the board. So I think. Trustee Kristen or Thompson can speak for that. Looks like there was a statute number of changes and minimal wording changes as well.
Yeah.
A lot of it. Done the things at the beginning there.
Right, it was just a lot of cleanup. And if I remember correctly, this one, we actually again went back to statute and just made sure that it, you know, if we're quoting the statute, that it quoted what the statute actually said. And that was, yeah. That was it. And looking at what, you know, whatever the updates were that ISBA had said, you know, their model policies. But most of it was just making sure that the, the language was the same as the statute. And that this statute's actually existed.
Yeah, we had to remove one.
Any other questions on that one?
Second question? No, I think it looks a little good.
And then the first read of update policy 1205, school board powers and duties.
That was just a statute correction, yeah.
It looks like that was all of it down on that one?
Yeah, we were trying to do that. Chrissy did a really good job of creating also a spreadsheet. So there's some that are just statute changes, just date changes, and that way we could get through them quicker.
First read of policy to update 126, authorization of signatures to be named.
Sharon, it's A type rather. It should not just say 126.
Yeah, 1260, sorry. Sorry.
Oh, no, mine doesn't have the zero, so I thought yours was the same.
Not this one, this is my paper. Sorry. First read that they, to policy 1260, there we go. Authorization of signatures to be named, authorization of signatures and electronic signatures. So we're changing because of the electronic signatures.
We had to add a component for electronic signatures, yes.
Keeping up with the times. Looks good.
Does the, does it matter, and maybe it doesn't matter, the director of business? We don't have a director of business. Should we change that title to the, to the CFO, Chief Financial and Operations Officer? Or is anyone, is that important? I don't know.
Yeah, I think we.
Trustee Thompson already brought that up and I, that was an error on my part. I didn't change it to CFO.
Which is good, this is a first read.
Anything else on that one?
No, a lot of this, in talking, there was a lot of it that was sort of already in place procedurally, you know, within the district. So just again, taking our policy, ISBA policy and melding them all together to update it.
Make it cohesive.
Trustee Kristen, we had talked about during policy committee, a disclosure when parents are doing electronic signature on Skyward. And so when they put in their electronic signature, there's a disclosure beside it that says you are signing, you're saying it's you. And that is all it says beside it. And then if there's ever a spot where a school or tech doesn't think the parent actually signed it, they'll request a paper copy with the parent's signature comes to the school.
Thank you for all your work on this. This is really great and I appreciate it. Anything else on those electronic signatures? What do you want?
Add it to that.
Add it to that.
Okay, next is the first read, update to policy 2110, lesson plan. Policy's updated, coincide with the updated public policy lines depending.
Yeah, the only correction we made was where in the first paragraph where it stated for the entire week. With this is Sexton's input, it became for the actual class presentation. So we're not binding teachers to an entire week because we know that, you know, everything changed at the split of a second. So they needed that flexibility.
We want to be flexible. That's a great change. Any discussion on that one? Okay, those will come before us for a vote. How will be next meeting? ISBA Region 1 meeting, I did see the recording this day.
And they did make the meeting nice and short for us. Dr. Meyer and I were there and they went through the 16 resolutions. Is that right? And two bylaw changes. But they worked right through it.
It was actually, it took a lot less time because Quinn was like, any questions? No, okay, I'm the next one. She was like.
Well, usually those meetings go forever.
Ever, because they were at the, at the alternative school, venture alternative school. But it was very quick, so. And our, all the districts were represented, either a board person was there or a superintendent or a clerk or somebody. So it was, it was, it was good.
I'm almost going to wait, they'll send out, since the convention is virtual, they'll send out still the book with all of the resolutions.
Yeah, we will, once we've been invoiced and once that's paid, they'll send a packet. They're going to push packets out to all the districts for everybody in paper form. So we look at your books and bags and everything.
And it's good to read through those resolutions, not only what Region 1 is presenting, but what other regions present. Kind of shows what different needs are throughout the state. And where their priorities lie versus ours. Sometimes they're close and sometimes they're really far apart. But it's fascinating to watch that whole process work, so.
And for year, the facility one goes back. If we could not be the one that doesn't have any funding and we have to have a super majority, it always goes back. So far it's never passed. But that was one of the things again, was looking at that facility bond issue, so.
That hopefully can have our interest.
Yeah, hopefully can, yes.
Okay. Next is board member input for future agenda items. So I was wondering, going back to the contact, the contact tracing, is it, would it be possible for Nurse Judy to come and give us a presentation on her procedure for that? So maybe it's.
I, I would. I'll give it from her in writing and then I will share it with the board. I don't want to have her have to do any extra time. She is working to have to come, I just wouldn't, I just couldn't, wouldn't feel right about that. But I could, I would give it.
Maybe your presentation would be good in that way. Can you influence how that process?
Yep, I will certainly.
Does that, would that help?
Oh, anything would be great, yes. We don't really have any information on the contact.
Yeah, I can get that from her tomorrow and then I can send it out to the board actually right now. But just in my follow up with her, gee, they have to contact the person that has the positive and who were they from their recollection? Who were they within six feet for 15 minutes or more? So it's the person who was the confirmed positive. And then at that point, sometimes students may not have the best memory. You can do the seating charts. And every teacher has done a seating chart to say, these are my students and these are the ones that were within. And so then the coach or the teacher then has to do the second layer of following through. And if a parent says, hey, no, it wasn't, they, this kid said they weren't, but they weren't. Then the nurses have interaction with that parent. But they have to take the word of the person who says, because one person could say no, and one could say it's the person who has the positive. Has that person's memory is what we take into account.
Yeah, it could be dangerous.
No, that's rough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, there's no perfect science. I can guarantee you, I will tell you that Portland Lane started with their own con, contact tracing because they wanted to control their own protocol in their district. It got to be so laborious and political that they said, we are not doing this any longer. And a couple of weeks ago, they said, we're going to get this back to, they gave it, actually gave it to Panhandle Health District. Which again, I'm not, I don't think is in the best, it interests our district unless this board said, yes, we want to get, have it go back as well. To Trustee Thompson's point earlier though, she, I just looked up the letter and she is correct. It says or Panhandle Health, so I need to take that off of all future, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so she.
I was just curious why we had it on there.
Well, and the bad part is, which again, is just too much going on at once. I'm not making excuses, but it was on initially. I took it off and then when I went back, I made copies, to your point, and I copied this one and not the one. So I have one that was done correctly and then all the ones since then. Definitely somebody else said it earlier, we're human.
Everyone's doing the best thing.
Yeah, so thank you for pointing that out. And all the ones after this now will be taken off of that, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
So what do we think about David Quinby? Do we think we want to give him an executive session? Do we think we, is that something that we would discuss in this forum? Or is that something we would discuss somewhere else in terms of if we're going to put that on the agenda for a future, for a future idea?
Yeah, well, if we, if the board wanted to have some data executive session, he would have to follow the chain of command through the protocols. You know, he said, I'd like some, so we could have any patron parent or, I mean, he's not even a current parent in the, it's a, he's a patron in the school district. But we would have anybody coming and having a complaint about something from their perspective and asking to get into the executive session. So we would have to, with any protocol, go through every single chain of command before it would go up to the board at all.
That's good to know. I mean, you know, if somebody comes and says that, you want to make sure that you follow through.
Has he ever been given, given that process before?
I'm a little concerned that he started off stating that he, because he did come, he's been to a few board meetings and he did speak at one and was cut off. And then was apparently reprimanded. And so I am concerned about that.
Yeah, and allegedly, again, I will remind people that the patron, people can say anything when they go up and say something. We need to get both sides. I guess what I would suggest is the board, if maybe you could meet with them individually and say, tell me about what your concerns are and how you perceive this. And then at that point, then I can do follow up from the other side. And I can do follow up for the board and say, here's the perspective from the other perspectives into the, because there's more information.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
Yeah, from, so I'm happy to do that, follow up for the school board. But I also do feel like it's important to listen to the patrons. And if the board wants to sit down and speak individually with him, we've, there's, I can let you know about the historical context up to this point, what's taking place as well.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Great.
Where's that? Running home, can you down here?
Yeah, I hope the weather, the wind's hot.
Windmill and power.
Yeah. Yeah, it's here, still spitting around, fill up all the animals, water is due there.